Good evening. I would like to call the East Lime Zoning Meeting of September 16th to order. It is 7:30.
The United States of America, and you are the public for which it stands, on a nation, under God, indivisible, in the great and justness for all.
First off, I'd like you all to just bear with me, okay? Because our chairman, unfortunately, cannot be with us tonight. So, um, at this time, I'd like to...Mr. Liska here? No, I'd like to sit. Ms. Markovitz, please? Do a roll call. Terrence Lemon, that is myself. I am here. Mr. Dwyer. Kim Kay.
President.
Mr. Peck. Ms. Thurlow.
Here.
Denise Markovitz.
Here.
Mr. Mahalan. Brooke. Thank you. Ms. Hardy. Thank you. Public delegations. Public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission on member...excuse me, on matters that are not on the agenda. Do we have any persons where should we speak that are items that are not on tonight's agenda? Carrying on. What's I? Oh, I'm sorry. Please go ahead. Please state your name for the record. Address.
Lindsay Rush, 15 Grassy Hill Road. And is it my understanding I can just ask general questions at this time, not pertaining to anything on the agenda?
Correct.
So I think these will hopefully be simple questions. So if a parcel of land over 10 acres is being carved into smaller plots for sale, am I correct in understanding that those changes would come through the zoning committee and appear on the meeting agendas and there'd be notice to abutting neighbors?
The answer is no. That will go through the planning commission. It would be a subdivision of land if it was...
Okay. Okay, thank you. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Do you have another question? Would outstanding deficiencies with one town agency impact progress with another town agency? For example, if...would several months of non-committed work from the Inland-Wetland Agency impact progress for a particular parcel of land in the zoning commission?
The answer is no, but when wetlands is concerned, the zoning commission, should it have an application that involves wetlands? Can't make a decision until they receive a report from the wetlands commission. If there's wetlands on the site, then the property owner is obligated to go to the wetlands commission to see if the project is conducting an activity which they deem might have some kind of adverse contact with. Needs to have a permit.
So...
So that's going to be their purview.
Yes.
That person is also Mr. Bochel.
Great. So if there's work that was not under the review of the Inland-Wetland Commission but should have been, would that prevent a zoning change from happening?
It may because they would go back. The wetlands people would investigate, and if they deem that they needed a permit and they refused to get one, they would take some type of action to enforce their regulations. And if they didn't need to, they would...they may conduct a hearing to review a permit. If they had to come into zoning after that fact, they have to make a decision first.
Yeah. So this would have been a case where there should have been a permit, there was not for three weeks, and then they just submitted it, the application on Tuesday at the Inland-Wetland Agency meeting.
Well, that's good. All of that will be outside the purview of the commission.
Okay.
Technically, not their concern or any interest of the request for all of the rest of the land.
Okay.
My suggestion is to talk to Mr. Bochel.
Yes. So he was the one who submitted the application three weeks late on Tuesday for...
Well, this could actually be the stat.
Okay. Great.
So I don't know who's submitting it. I'm not familiar with this particular case, but...
Okay.
My advice would be to talk to Mr. Bochel. Gaggle show like how planning a wetlands agent.
Yep.
He should be able to offer you very good guidance.
Great. But that will not impact a zoning change for that same parcel of land?
Um, we're talking zoning change is a different animal.
Yep.
This is not...if there's not a project before us, it's a zone change.
Yes.
So, no, I don't believe that...
Deficiency.
If someone considers there's a deficiency, we have no evidence of that.
Okay.
And so, um, we...I don't think there's an issue. I haven't been noticed other by wetlands. No one's talked to us. Um, and this is a zone change, not a project, not a special permit, not a site plan. So I think we can make a decision. Should that come up?
Okay.
Are you referring to something that's on the agenda this evening?
Well, I was trying to ask a general question about the protocol, but yes, the answer would be relevant to a particular item later.
On tonight's agenda, which is what I stated you cannot...
Sure. Well, I was trying to ask a general procedural question because I'm new to zoning and planning and all of those changes. So I didn't want to ask an inappropriate question.
Right. But I will say we don't have any evidence or knowledge that that, you know, you seem to be implying that I would call an allegation, and that would have to be vetted, and at this time...
Sure.
We don't have anything on the record, so we could go forward with that. The commission can make a decision.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the explanation. It helps me to learn about the process. Thank you.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Pardon me, but Mr. Liska has joined us, so I'm going to ask that Mr. Liska join us and Ms. Markovitz reseat herself for the time being for the first item on our...
Mr. Chairman, that's because Mr. Liska was here to...
That is what I was just about to say, Mr. Mahalan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Because our first item on our agenda is the continuation of the application of Harvest Christian Fellowship of Niantic Incorporated for a special permit for a church-religious institution on the subject property. Said parcel is located at North Bridebrook Road, East Lime Assessors Map 24.0, Lot 76. Now, we'll make a note that this is left open for the purpose of inquiries of this Therefore, there will be no additional public testimony at this time. Thank you. All right. Now, we have some information to read, Ms. Thurlow. We want to read Mr. Urban's letter. Is that correct, Mr. Mahalan?
Yes, you can read it on the record as the commission may recall.
Exhibit L.
You left the hearing open for the sole purpose of receiving written comments from this gentleman, so I think it's appropriate to put him into the record.
Okay.
Jason Ehrin, One Woodrow Drive, East Lime, Connecticut, 06333, September 9th, 2021. Members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to express in writing my concerns regarding the proposed Harvest Christian Church development. As you are aware, after speaking at the public forum, several committee members asked for my public safety concerns to be formally addressed and conveyed to the town and fire marshal. I have complete faith in the office of the fire marshal that no certificate of occupancy would be issued without the building up to current fire code. Prior to the CO and approval, I do have concerns that could be addressed in the plan review phases and/or require changes to the current parking area and single entrance and egress driveway. The construction of an 8,000-foot place of assembly without a sprinkler system may very well be within the fire code, and it's the choice of the occupant based on cost-saving measures. Yet several factors in addition to the lack of sprinklers may lead to the delay in extinguishment, safety of occupants and responders, and excessive property damage. Entrants and egresses are limited to one single driveway located at the end of a dead-end road. Fire apparatus, ambulances, and responders will have to navigate the single access point while civilian vehicles are exiting. While this means of egress and exit have been reviewed by wetlands and zoning and is well within the rules, the issue of water supply is a wild card that isn't being discussed. Without a fire sprinkler system, extinguishment will be delayed until the arrival of the fire department. Response times and staffing will vary due to the combination career volunteer staffing. The closest hydrant, as described in the meeting, is not adjacent or near the proposed building. It is located off the proposed access roadway. The secondary hydrant located on North Brideroad is not within the reach of a simple hose lay and extends the carrying capacity of fire apparatus. I foresee an issue of having to use a hydrant off the access road and the large diameter supply hose being across the only means of entrance and egress for fire apparatus and civilian departure. The proposed roadway and parking area is approved for 17 parking spaces. Based on the occupancy capacity of the sanctuary and the capacity of the 1,600-square-foot assembly hall, it is very well possible the entire parking lot will be at capacity and additional parking on the roadway. This leads to the challenge to properly park, position, and maneuver fire apparatus. Flanders Fire Department is the primary responding agency to the proposed site. Stated on their website, the primary response apparatus for commercial building fire is B-25. B-25 is a 2015 Quint ladder tower. A quint, in layman's term, has fire hose, a pump, and a large aerial ladder. The truck is 48 foot long and requires 18 feet total side to side to deploy the aerial outriggers, like a crane. The truck has an inherent wide turning radius. The truck has the largest pump capacity in its fleet, according to the website, but only carries 300 gallons of water. It will require deployment in a crowded parking lot...I'm sorry. It will...it will require hydrant water or tanker water for an 8,000-square-foot building. The maneuverability, placement, and deployment in a crowded parking lot is very challenging and made worse by a limited area to turn and/or reverse direction. Now pair that with the large hose line in the road arriving...and arriving apparatus to include a second aerial truck. It is potentially hindering fire ground operations and endangering safety. The roadway and parking area are of great concern. The current plans do not provide adequate room to maneuver, position, and turn at an occupancy with an at-capacity parking area and a limited egress pathway. While it may not be fair to assume the worst-case scenario, fire protection and response should be geared toward the worst possible scenario to have the best possible outcome. Sincerely, Jason Urban.
Thank you, Ms. Thurlow. Appreciate it. And in response to that, we have an email from the town fire marshal, deputy fire marshal that is, I apologize, on Wednesday, September 15th. Uh, he sent an email to Mr. Wren saying, "Please let this email serve as an approval to the site plan as shown by Mr. Wren," in his email dated 15/21/21. Signage along the access road, applying it as a...will be field verified during field inspections as this project moves forward. A full plan review of the structure will follow after the anticip...excuse me, anticipated approval by zoning. I hope you'll find this sufficient, as it was the most prompt avenue for a response. Thank you, Frank D. Ellsworth, deputy fire marshal. This time, I'd like to call Mr. Wren.
Attorney...attorney of Kowska is going to precede me for a minute or two, and then I will leave the time for him.
Thank you. Just state your name for me, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Sylvia Rikowska, and as Mr. Wren suggested, I'm the counsel for the applicant in this particular case. I won't take too much of your time, but I did want to preface and frame the issues a little bit today. Obviously, here, we're here today for a continued public hearing. After that last public hearing just two weeks ago, we did have extensive testimony, public comment, evidence, and so forth. At the end of that late evening public hearing, the panel decided that it would continue that public hearing for the purpose of having the fire marshal comment as to Mr. Urban's letter, which you appropriately submitted into the record today, as well as allow that the fire marshal's response to be a portion of the record, and I appreciate and thank you for putting that in the record as well. That public hearing was also continued for the purpose of allowing the applicant to respond to, obviously, the fire marshal and Mr. Urban's written reports, and we're prepared to do that for you today. Thank you.
For the record, Joe Wren, professional engineer of Indigo Land Design of Old Sabra. And I just want to keep this to the point and brief. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, the main point of holding the hearing open was to resolve some open items from the town fire marshal. You already read that email, and that email was in response to a review of an updated plan. I brought here the updated plans, and they're updated through September 15th, 2021, which was yesterday. The plan was emailed to the town staff. Again, is the avenue that was most prompt, trying to get some sort of a reply for the meeting for your request. And I will leave this plan set with you for the...
Excuse me, Mr. Wren. Could you just turn that a little bit this way?
Which way?
So Mr. Peck could also see it. There you go. Thank you.
So trying to get me to see it and stay on the microphone is a little tricky as well.
I apologize, but last time it was just very tough.
Yep. That's okay. So what we did, the minor changes on this plan is, if you can see, up in the north corner of the property, we added a fire apparatus turnaround, a hammerhead turnaround there. This is about 120 feet long and 15 feet wide, per the request of the fire marshal, those dimensions. He reviewed that turnaround and generated that email and response. The other site-related matter that he mentioned in his earlier comment was the location of that hydrant. His original comment said that it was more than 100 feet off the road. It is about 50, a little bit more than 50 feet off the road, but in talking to him and explaining, you know, different weather conditions and ability, trying to find it quickly and so forth, made a lot of sense. We have relocated that hydrant up to the island directly across from the front door as recommended by him, so we now have that hydrant very close without laying hose up the access road and so forth, very close to the front entrance of the building. The other items are building-related as far as fire sprinklers. Fire sprinklers and fire alarm. Fire alarm is absolutely required by code, so there will be a fire alarm. There were some emails also between the fire marshal's office and the project architect, and they are choosing to do compartmentalization of the building, so no compartment of the building will be able to have the capacity of more than 300, which would be the...which would be the requirement for sprinklers in that case. So there will be no sprinklers in the building, but we've provided the turnaround and the hydrant relocation, and you read that response from the fires marshal's office, so they are happy with the changes in the plan. Couple other very minor changes that we made in response to what we heard at that last meeting. Down in the south corner of the property, along the property line, we had several large arbivites proposed in that area. We still have them proposed in the same quantity and the same configuration, but we've added a two-foot-high berm there just for...just to elevate that landscaping. And if there's any notion of drainage making it from this site to that property in that area, it now physically cannot because the ground is two feet higher and would have to either divert to the north or the south. The way that this is designed is that any overflow would overflow that last little...the small basin and go towards the road where there are catch basins, and it would take it through the closed drainage system away from any private property. So we added that as well. We also have an email from Mr. Geisell, who is the town planner and wetlands officer. I could submit this into the record, but I'll read it quickly. It's just a small paragraph. This was dated today. Mr. Geisell also has emailed this plan, and he was able to review it for this meeting. And it reads, "Joe," which would be me, "as the proposed hammerhead is located in an area proposed to be disturbed and reworked. The proposed hammerhead doesn't significantly change the plan and is well within the scope of the inland wetlands permit as previously issued for this project. That said, I noted the latest plan revision date is 8/4/2021. Would that be correct?" And in fact, that is not correct. As I mentioned earlier, the latest plan that he reviewed, the formal revision date is September 15th. Obviously, it was done yesterday, the same plan that the fire marshal prepared. So we have that. We could submit that to you as an exhibit. Also, as far as housekeeping goes, there are other things I just want to make sure are part of the record. We do have alleged light health approval, which I believe we may have included in your packets with the application. I just wanted to make sure it was part of the record, and that approval was on March 11th, 2021. We also have...I know that you have the fire marshal comments. We also have the inland wetlands approval and permit, and that was dated February 9th, 2021. So if that is not already an exhibit, I'd like to submit that for the record. We also have a few reviews that were done by the previous town engineer when he did a detailed review of the stormwater analysis for this project, and he had no open concerns or comments to approve the drainage as is, which is on these plans as well. So if none of those items are part of the record, I would like to submit those as exhibits as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wren. Should we read the revised one from Mr. Geisell? We do have them on record, but by all means. Thank you. Okay, moving on. This time, I take a motion to close the public hearing. If no one has any other questions for Mr. Wren. Motion by Ms. Kay, seconded by Ann. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Six, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Wren.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we take a two-minute break so the next team can set up and get ready for the hearing.
By all means. At this time, we will take a 10-minute break. All right. It is now 7:56. Let's call the meeting back to order. Moving on. Second item on our agenda is the application of Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings LLC applicant for a special permit to construct a fast-food restaurant with drive-through, a coastal area management site plan, and a gasoline service station at 51 Boston Post Road, East Lime Assessors Map, 36 Lot 61. Make a note, legal ads have been run. We have a pedal. Comes, Mr. Mahalan. Are you going to read these on your fish map? Oh. Hold on. My apologies. I told you to bear with me. I apologize. I'd like to excuse Mr. Liska. Thank you. And reseat Ms. Markovitz. Thank you. I apologize.
September 16th, 2021, to the East Lime Zoning Commission, from William Mahalan. Application of Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings LLC for a special permit to construct a fast-food restaurant with drive-through facilities. Site plan approval and coastal area management site plan review for a gasoline service station at 51 Boston Post Road, East Lime Assessors Map, 36 Lot 61. In this proposal, the applicant is proposing to redevelop the existing site by constructing a travel center consisting of a convenience store, a fast-food restaurant, and drive-through and a gasoline filling station. The site consists of a 3.24-acre parcel of land that is abandoned. Previously, it housed a restaurant and motel. It is on CA Commercial. The property is bordered by I-95 to the northwest, Route 1 to the west, a cemetery and single family home to the east-southeast. The site will be occupied by a 7,698-square-foot building with a 1,000-square-foot outdoor patio. It will house a convenience store, restaurant, and a drive-through. There will be eight fueling islands, which will have 16-vehicle fueling stalls and three truck fueling positions. The primary fueling sites will be housed under a 50-by-125-foot main canopy. A second 30-by-45-plus-or-minus...46-plus-or-minus-feet canopy will cover the three truck fueling stations. The main fueling docks for vehicles will be located adjacent to the main building. The truck fueling station is separate from this area and located in the northern corner of the site. It essentially has its own access and egress travel lane and was purposely separated from other onsite activities. The zoning regulations allow gasoline service stations in the CA zones outright as provided for in Section 8.1.5 of the East Lime Zoning Regulations. Fast food and drive-through windows are permitted by special permit under Section 8.2.7 and 8.2.12. The special permit uses are subject to the standards of Section 25. All uses must comply with the parking and site plan requirements of Section 22 and 24. In addition, the site is located within the coastal area management zone. Due to this fact, a CAM site plan review application is also required and has been provided. The applicant's team is here and will provide a detailed presentation. It will address all the above-noted regulatory issues. They will also address onsite traffic circulation and off-site traffic. Traffic is of concern. Technically, it is not within our jurisdiction. In this case, it will be under the State of Connecticut's authority. A traffic report was provided, and general questions are appropriate. The Town of East Lime Land Use Team has reviewed the technical aspects of the plan, including drainage, onsite traffic circulation, landscaping, building design, and has signed off on the proposal. The proposal has also received wetlands approval, which must be issued prior to any decision by the East Lime Zoning Commission. In conclusion, the commission should carefully evaluate the proposal, taking into consideration the technical compliance and the standards of the special permit requirements as provided in Section 25 of the regulations.
Thank you, Ms. Thurlow. This time, I would allow you to make your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, for the record, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a partner and a land use attorney at the law firm of Toven Carberry in New London, Connecticut, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here before you tonight. I represent a company, a Connecticut Limited Liability Company, Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings LLC, which has a pending purchase contract on property located along I-95 and located at 51 Boston Post Road here in East Lime. Joining me tonight, a few introductions. With me, Mike Frisbee. Mike is the owner of Noble Energy. I also have James Bernardino from CMG Engineering. He's the project civil engineer. And I also have Scott Hesketh, who I'm sure some of you are familiar with, from FA Hesketh and Associates, who is our project traffic engineer. This site is a fairly well-known site here in the community. It is owned by Herb Chambers of East Lime Incorporated, and it is located squarely in your CA Commercial District. As you're likely aware, this site was previously developed, as Mr. Mahalan indicated, but has sat along the highway on the outskirts of town as an abandoned and blighted commercial property literally for decades. It's an eyesore. It's an attractive nuisance, and it certainly doesn't add anything to the community in terms of its aesthetics or its use. I'd like to give you tonight a connection with my client's special permit and CAM applications to finally redevelop this property with a gasoline station with convenience retail along with fast-food restaurant and drive-through facility uses. This project is a so-called travel center. It's a development that is now the industry standard, and these types of projects in this type of configuration are being constructed and are commonplace throughout Connecticut and the rest of the country. As you're aware, gasoline stations with retail are permitted in your CA zone, subject to site plan approval pursuant to Section 8.1.6, but the fast-food restaurant and the drive-through facility aspects of the plan require special permit approval pursuant to Sections 8.2.7 and 8.2.12, respectively. Our plans, which we're going to share with you tonight, will meet or exceed the minimum requirements of your zoning regulations, and the elements of our plan that require special permits, again, the fast-food and the drive-through facilities, we believe are completely consistent and harmonious with this area located directly along your interstate. We've had a number of rounds of pre-application meetings with the town dating back to... We've had a number of rounds of pre-application meetings with the town dating back to earlier this spring. We've had pre-application review by city, town departments and agencies, as well as post-application review. And this plan has gone through a number of iterations as we've addressed these comments. I'm happy to say tonight that, from our perspective, we fully addressed all the comments of your fire marshal, of your town engineer, and all other city departments and agency, including Mr. Maholland. I would note for the record that we have requested formal waivers of sidewalks for the project along Boston Post Road. That's obviously due to safety reasons, considering the property's location directly next to the on-ramps for I-95 and the lack of sidewalks in general in the area. We've also requested a waiver of the side yard landscape buffer due to existing encroachments, including our neighbor's driveway, and also an accessway that exists along our eastern property line for the Riverhead Cemetery, which is next door to the property as well. And when Mr. Bernardino walks through the site plan, he'll point out these areas on the existing conditions plan. As Mr. Maholland indicated, there is a coastal area site, site plan review that's required for the project, despite the fact that this property has no waterfront whatsoever. It is technically still within 1,000 feet of coastal waters that are to the east and beyond an additional property toward the Niantic River. As the property is previously developed, as Mr. Maholland said, it's, a lot of people call it a waffle house or the old restaurant. This property under Connecticut's CAM Act is considered developed shorelands. And so your application in the redevelopment of developed shorelands should focus on our stormwater plan to ensure that we're dealing with stormwater appropriately on the site. The project was required to obtain an inland wetland approval from the town's wetland agency due to the proximity of Latimer Brook, which is actually 300 feet south of the property across Boston Post Road and beyond another property. We obviously have no impact at that great distance, but we were required to get a permit. We obtained that permit on July 8th, 2021, and we published and perfected that approval shortly thereafter. Mr. Maholland, I don't know if you have a copy of that approval in the record, but I enter that as an exhibit if you don't.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to mark that as an exhibit? Start a list, please.
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A. Hope you have that. Thank you.
I would also note, just as another housekeeping item, I did mention before that our property is adjacent to the Riverhead Cemetery property, which is to the northeast of our property. The Riverhead Cemetery Association has an access across this property. And we've met with the attorney for the association, who's actually Ed O'Connell, who's also the town attorney. And we've negotiated with them and reached an agreement with them to maintain their access going forward, also to provide a new recordable easement for them to address some deficiencies in the easement they have over our property. And Mr. Frisbee was also nice enough to agree to donate and install a new gate for the cemetery, which apparently was stolen some time ago by thieves. And so we're doing that for the cemetery as well. I just want to say for the record, again, tonight's public hearing was public, notice was published in the New London Day, and we did post the sign on the property on August 31st, 2021, in compliance with your regulations. I know you have a very busy agenda tonight, so I'm going to try to move as quickly as possible. And we're, as a team, we're going to just try to highlight the key aspects of the project. If you have any specific questions that we don't cover in our presentation, don't hesitate to stop us and ask for additional detail. Our plan tonight is Mike Frisbee is going to introduce himself and his company, which is a self-built Connecticut-based independent operation. He's going to review with you the architectural plans and the floor plans for the new travel center building, and which he's, we've worked really closely with Mr. Maholland on over the last several months, and really, I think, capture the product that he wants to bring to East Lime. Mr. Bernardino will walk you through our engineered site plan, the location of the various buildings and other improvements. He'll discuss internal traffic circulation on the site. He'll share details of our state-of-the-art and fully code-compliant underground storage tank system. He'll describe our stormwater management plan. He'll review with you our landscaping and lighting plans. And Mr. Bernardino will also briefly touch on our traffic report and the conclusions of that report. And Mr. Hesketh is here if you have any specific questions about his conclusions. And then at the end, I'll make some concluding remarks before we open up the hearing for public comment. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mike Frisbee, who is the owner of Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings, to introduce himself, the company, and to go through the plans for our travel center building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Good evening. For the record, my name is Michael Frisbee. I'm the owner of Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings and Noble Gas Inc. Our offices are located in one of our newest facilities in downtown Hartford at 131 Buckingham Street. I'm a Connecticut resident, and as Bill mentioned, I'm an owner-operator. I'm not a big corporate. We're a family-owned business, and we have six locations in Connecticut right now. And we're working on our seventh in New Britain, which will be open in a few weeks. So we're excited to be here and expanding in Connecticut. I'd like to walk through the elevations if you don't mind. Is it okay if I come on this side of the, Bill, is it okay if I come over there to point out? Okay.
Turn the mic around. There you go. Thank you.
I just want to make sure we communicate. So when I first came in to visit with Bill Maholland and talking about my ideas and plans, we had a totally different style of building. We worked through that with my architect and with Bill, and we created what we think is a really nice New England-style building. We have culture stone, clapboard siding. We have two main entrances. It's an 8,000 square foot building. It's finished all the way around. You can see a lot of people don't finish the back of their buildings. We have culture stone all the way in the back. You'll see all of our mechanicals are hidden. You're not going to see things on the ground or on the back of the building. You're not going to see things hanging out in the back when you drive around the building as well. We have larger than normal sidewalks than most folks, so people can get in and walk comfortably along the side and not worry about cars in the front. But as part of our design, and what's really important for me is that our attendants, and there's lots of glass, our attendants can see out onto the property and see what's in front of them. They keep everything in front of them, but they also are aware of what's going on on the property, which is important for me as from an operations standpoint. That's the elevations. I'll come back to that in a second. The way that the industry, you know, in other parts of the country, you have more offerings onsite for our services. I plan, and what we're trying to design, is building for the future, right? The future of transportation, the future of travel, things of that nature. So we're really focused on the level of finish, a nicer level of finish than what you see in the industry. So the ceramic tile, the granite countertops, the level finish is nicer. You'll see a main entrance way into the Noble Market. You'll see another entrance way into the food court. We'll have a coffee and breakfast program. We'll have a grinder shop. We'll have a nice decorative but open seating area, which I think is, it's engaging and enticing for our customers to come in and actually want to sit down and enjoy our food offerings as opposed to the standard convenience store where they want to get you in and get you off property. On this side, we have an ice cream shop, which will be able to have some seating at the bench at the windows, but also have the outdoor patio, which I'm sure Jim will go over on the site plan. I control everything inside the property, so I own and operate that. So it's not, you're not having a national franchise come in. So a Connecticut-based business, I was the founder of Frisbee's Dairy Barn. I brought ice cream back to New Britain, went to Ice Cream University, learned how to make ice cream. This will be part of that program. I've become a Nardelli's franchisee, another Connecticut-based business. Assuming that we are successful here, then Nardelli's corporate would look at this location and give me the okay to be able to bring them there if we want to do that. That's my vision. Another higher-end product, not a Subway or another type of grinder shop. But again, that would be controlled by me. So I own the land, I own the improvements, and I know the business. So it's important for me to look at that as well as the level of finish and bring, you know, something different to this marketplace that people haven't seen yet. We can talk about the canopies. You know, it's not just a big steel canopy. We worked hard to create something that was, had a pitch roof, more New England style in keeping with the building. Let's see what else we have here. Just the signage in our colors. So actually wore the noble colors today. People appreciate that. But it's fresh, it's new, it's different. It's not the big oil companies, the Shell, the ExxonMobil, et cetera. So with that, I know we want to keep it brief. If anybody has any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I do think, oh, good.
Yeah.
My eyesight is not the best with these smaller plans, so.
Sure.
I wanted to ask, given that this is right off of 95, if there is gasoline for tractor-trailers or is this intended to be automobiles only?
So it'll be a combination. So the way that we set up our.
Yeah, I think Jim's going to go over that right now.
Okay.
The answer is yes. And we're going to show you the two different sort of travel patterns for trucks and for cars on the site. The answer is that is yes.
Mr. Frisbee, you're more so like the building and the occupants.
Yes, so just who I am and the building, the architectures, and the operations itself.
So does anybody have any questions about the building itself and the business inside? Mr. Dwyer.
Do you have a generator? You know, everything's going to be shut down. Is your gas station going to be shut down or do you have a generator?
Actually, we put generators in all the locations. So we do have them, and we're planning to put one here. Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could you show us on the diagram, please, where the gas tanks would be located?
That's all coming, Ms. Harding. He's more so just the building and the business itself. We still have a lot of the presentation to go through, so.
I'm welcome. Any other questions, over to you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we get free ice cream? Go ahead. Carry on.
Thank you. For the record, Jim Bernardino. I'm a, excuse me, principal engineer with CMG, with the civil site engineers for the proposed development.
Can you just try to use the microphone as well, please?
Yes, I'll try to put that in because I'm going to be pointing to this side more frequently. Just to go over a quick overview of the existing conditions. As mentioned, we do have the existing building, dating at the time, at this time, the overall property shown in orange here. As you can see, outlined in red is the impervious on the site. So right now, the existing conditions is a deteriorated site, no stormwater controls, somewhat of an eyesore as well. Obviously, we're going to have a great deal of improvement. So the proposal is obviously raise and rebuild the entire site. So everything on the site existing will be demolished. This is the proposed site plan. Outlined in orange is the limits of the property line. Darker red is the limits of the pavement. I'll go over the circulation in a moment. And obviously, the darker red is the proposed building. Canopies that are on the site will support eight MPVs, multiple product dispensers, which regular, premium, and we'll also have diesel available for those as well. Around the back of the property, we have another canopy that will shelter the high-speed diesel, which will be for anticipated tractor-trailer fueling. These are different dispensing systems. They generate a high volume of flow, so the larger fuel tanks of tractor-trailers can get filled much quicker. The proposed site will be accessed by two curb cuts. One will be a full movement curb cut, which aligns with the existing driveway as it currently stands today on the site. Be very minor modifications to make sure we have curbing and appropriate design guidelines with DOT. This will be a full, full access curb cut. Egress access coming into the site will be restricted to pedestrian vehicles only. Your normal SUVs and pedestrian passenger vehicle cars. The larger tractor-trailers that are going to be anticipated for the high-speed diesel will access the secondary driveway further to the east of the site that will also service the existing cemetery. This access will be signed for tractor-trailer trucks use, so there won't be confusion as to where tractor-trailer trucks will be entering. It will be controlled, the site access with signage, just to make sure that we can separate those larger vehicles from the passenger vehicles as well. The anticipated site circulation will be entrance only for the tractor-trailer vehicles coming around the back of the site. That access for the tractor vehicles, tractor-trailer trucks will be separated completely from the passenger vehicles. We do have curbing and barriers between the circulation of the tractor-trailers and passenger vehicles all the way around, so there will be no intermingle of the vehicles. The same driveway access will service the cemetery in the rear in this location here. As Mr. Sweeney mentioned, they came to agreement on site access, and we're going to be installing a proposed key to reflect upon that was accidentally stolen.
Mr. Bernardino, could you go over that truck pattern again for me, please?
Sure. So coming off the highway or any direction, this will be signed for tractor-trailer truck vehicles. We will have signage here as well. Coming into the site, circle around the side. We have a crossroad, so we can separate the cemetery. What is the cemetery? So just make sure there's no conflict.
Where's the entrance to the house that's located across the, or next to the property?
Right here.
So it's a separate, that's a separate.
That's a separate access. And as you can see, that access goes to the residential property to the east, does encroach onto the subject property. We're not changing any characteristics of that. We're not going to impede that entrance.
All right. Please, to get back to my truck route.
Yes.
So that's the entrance. How do they get back out?
They back out, they will circulate around the side of the site. We do propose two parking spots in case tractor-trailer truck wants to come in and get a cup of coffee. However, we're going to limit that, we'll go over the parking. And once they come around this area, they have circulation, come back out of the site, and they have the appropriate turning radius and the line providing the proposed driveway to accommodate. So we have a separate tunnel. Do we have any idea what that is?
The air conditioning system is going to be there. Check if it's able to handle that.
Please, Jim, I apologize for that. Yeah. All right. Sorry, Mr. Brinkley. You're better.
So the truck circulation would be around the perimeter of the outside of the site, separated by. Anyone carrying a light, no cross.
So you say they come around, where do they? And you have to do a.
Come back out. This is moved and separated. So there will be just, they'll come out, exit, and pass the passenger.
Okay. That's.
Yeah. We do have controlled stop signs and things of that nature. And visibility is relatively open here, so we don't anticipate any type of conflict as far as internal site circulation. Passenger vehicles might enter the site, coming in, and then they have the ability to circle the building for the drive-through. The window will be looking on the side. We do have a bypassing of going into curb, he said, if they want to go through the drive-through, there's ability to escape around the site and not have to wait in the line should there be one. Also, the development is three EV charging stations. So it's three EV stations, incorporating those into all of his developments moving forward. Obviously, it's going to be part of the future, so he's definitely planning to that as well. So I think he's careful. With that, we've developed a comprehensive set of site plans that address a number of potential impacts on the site. First, on our drainage system. As I mentioned in the introduction, existing conditions, we have a large impervious area. She flows uncontrolled out to, out to the roadway. We're proposing to collect that and infiltrate it within two different systems. We have a large underground infiltration system here, and then we have to have a conventional open-air detention basin. Collecting all the runoff, we're in deep-some-catch basins, water quality units. We have underground infiltration chambers that are fitted with what they call isolator rows, which provide an additional level of treatment and filtration of that. Also, underground, open-air infiltration basin. So we're collecting and infiltrating everything from the 25-inch stone. Everything else, there'll be a slight overflow discharge to the road system and down, which mimics the existing conditions. It's approximately about 70% average of stormwater runoff from the site. So if you come up with a number, we're knocking it down to 30, 100 down to 30. So we've done that, just in consideration of, you know, potential impacts. And we worked out many details with the engineering department on several occasions, and we've just recently received that we've addressed all their problems. Same thing, we're trying to make this site as a site as an all. That is going to remain on the site, to be utilized as we look for supply valves, as they call it, Connecticut, or the building, obviously, if we. So all the tests were positive, great results on the site. So we don't see any issue with the Ledge Light Health District. We're gonna have onsite underground propane tanks to fill. There's no natural gas available. And then electric is just gonna be a standard service coming into the property. We've also developed a lighting plan that adhered to the regulations. And we also worked with staff to make sure that we got the right light levels and the heat aspects. You know, I think it was four thousand kelvin or four kelvin. So we worked that out with the town, made sure that our lighting consultant met those regulations and/or guidelines that the commission would like to see. We've also developed a comprehensive landscaping plan that was part of the package. And obviously, a set of construction details to allow for appropriate construction of the site. And we've also incorporated a comprehensive erosion sediment and erosion control set of plans. Temporary settling basins, hay bales, silt fens, diversion bikes, things of that nature, all part of the proposal. One other item that we want to, it was a question, I'll hit it now, I just, the underground storage tanks. Obviously, there's going to be four underground storage tanks on the site. There's gonna be two underground storage tanks in this location here to the west. There're gonna be two underground tanks servicing the, excuse me, the passenger vehicle AMPDs. We have a separate underground diesel tank that will service the high-speed diesel for the tractor-trailer trucks. And then there'll be a smaller tank there, it's DEF. It's a diesel emission fluid injection. That's a very small ratio, which all the modern tractor-trailer trucks have. It allows for a cleaner emission discharge. So that's something that is going to be provided to the proposed customers. As part of the application submission package, we did put in a, you know, operating program, the standard safety features, so we could kind of give a general overview of the underground storage tanks. Just to make sure that everything is understood, that we're gonna be installing a state-of-the-art underground fuel storing system that'll be corrodest, non-corrodest, made of fiberglass, double-walled. So there'll be no buried joints on the property, on the system. It's a continuous monitoring system for, for, excuse me, for the overall development. There's redundant leak detections, you know, we have multiple sumps on the tanks as well as the dispensers. So if there's any leaks anywhere, they will get detected. We have high-level alarms and high-level shut-offs that prevent overfilling of the tank in case the gentleman that's filling the tank decides to run in and get a cup of coffee and the tank fills up. So there's safeguards against those types of things happening where the fuel stops filling in the tanks to avoid any of those fills. There's, we provide bumper stops at the end of all the islands so people don't crash into the tanks. We have crash valves at all the dispensers. Unlike the movies, when some people run over the fuel dispenser and knock it off, it doesn't blow up and the guys are fuel. It shuts everything down. So that, all those and some other key components for safety measures are all going to be in this. We're gonna be needing all state, federal, and local regulations for the installation of this. It will be thoroughly reviewed as part of the building permit process with the fire department as well. So all of that will, you know, assure that we have a safe and appropriate design for the underground storage tanks. Also, as we were talking about stormwater, you know, we are with the CAM application as well. So working with Mr. Sweeney, put the application together with the inland wetlands as well. We took a look at where does our stormwater go currently. Mr. Sweeney mentioned that we have a couple of resource areas on the other side of Boston Post Road, you know, a freshwater wetland, but relatively significantly further away from our property. However, the stormwater did not run to those wetlands. Water came down down Boston Road and into Nyannet River. So it's within the title jurisdiction. We took those measures to protect stormwater, as I mentioned, reducing the overall flow by approximately seventy percent of the site, providing water quality, treatment, and infiltration above and beyond, you know, what's required by local and state regulations. Lastly, want to touch base on the traffic. Obviously, we've been in communication with the DOT for several months. We've provided them with conceptual plans and we receive feedback, modified. And what we've done is we're in the process of further communications with the DOT to, you know, formalize our permits. And ultimately, with the studies that have been done by Mr. Hesketh, ultimately, you know, get approval for the development with some minor striping alterations in the front, just to better delineate turning lanes and the like. Mr. Hesketh's report, obviously, conducted traffic counts, evaluated existing conditions, the proposed conditions as well as future conditions, and did incorporate and consider developments that have not been built at this time. You know, with that, all the data came to a point that there's no negative impact along the, or negligible impact along Boston Post Road. If, you know, if there is any congestion on the site as a result of the traffic, it'd be limited to onsite. So, and it would not interfere with any of the existing traffic patterns along Boston Post Road. Obviously, Mr. Hesketh's here for more detailed explanations or questions that you may have if so desired. With that, you know, if there's any questions for me, I can turn it over to Dr. Bill or...
So I think it's great that you are looking to diversify the entrance of vehicles separating autos from tractor-trailers. But I'm very concerned that you didn't create a separate exit and you're trying to funnel both tractor-trailers and autos out of the same exit. Is there a reason why, when you're wrapping around the tractor-trailers, you wouldn't take them out, a separate entrance on the south side as opposed to bringing them down and mixing with the auto?
Yeah, we looked at various options for tractor-trailer truck circulations on the site. One, we're trying to, you know, maintain existing curb cuts on the site, which we were able to do. But we did take a look at potential options of coming further up. We had, we're too close in proximity to the on-ramp, so that was a concern. And also, topography in this area here did not allow for a usable tractor-trailer truck entrance. It would be too steep, even too steep for a pedestrian vehicle. When you look at topography-wise, we have a relatively steep grade, but it gets even worse once you get a little further away. So, you know, we looked at those options and we found that with this layout, it did separate them, even though we were outcombining them at the end. We do have some controlled and open site lines that allow for safe exiting of the site.
One question for Ms. Mahalan. Ms. Mahalan, does any, does this area fall anywhere into our Aquifer Protection Agency? No? Good. The underwater tanks, let me ask. Thank you. The underground tanks.
Mr. Mahalan?
In your discussions with DOT, have you discussed that, the exit and egress, the access and egress? And have they had any comment to date? Is that something you can share with us?
I believe Mr. Mahal, Mr. Sweeney, provided the initial DOT feedback that came, that showed the entrance. If not, we could definitely provide that to the commission. The initial comments were a little bit benign. They had some comments about drainage. They had some comments about no access along the side, providing new fences, things of that nature. We subsequently provided a more detailed evaluation after that, more drainage, more traffic studies, more traffic counts and the like. And the DOT is in the process of reviewing that. Yes.
If I could just jump on to that, Mr. Mahalan. Our initial review by DOT indicated that we will be substituting encroachment permit. This is not a major traffic generator permit project, but we are subject to encroachment permit. And our site lines for both, both access points need to meet state requirements for the issuance of the encroachment permit. And I think, I think you properly said before, this section of Route One is within state jurisdiction. If you don't satisfy the state, you don't build the project. Bottom line.
I have a question, I believe it's for you, Mr. Bernardino. Would you guys be against, like, improving, you know, your gas tank situation there in terms of the storage? We had another project in town which put in a phenomenal system to where it's constant monitoring. It's basically tank within a tank. As you heard Mr. Dwyer refer to our Aquifer, which is in the very similar area. You are not in it, not by any means, but you are close to wetlands, you are within a thousand feet of tidal wetlands. Would you be against looking into and possibly installing such tanks as Mr. Mahalan could advise you what they were that our other project had? You could stand up to the mic, please.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Right now, all the designs and the standards are a double-wall tank. So in theory, they are a tank inside a tank.
Not a state requirement.
What's that?
It's a state requirement.
It's a state requirement, yes, exactly.
So I guess my question is to you, the monitoring that this other project did, because I'm not a big fan of underground tanks to begin with. But they impressed me with their system that they did, which basically is a tank within a tank. So they took these tanks and they put them in basically a concrete, what I'll call like a septic tank, even though it's not. And a vault, thank you, appreciate that. And the monitoring that they had just basically blew me out of the water, man. It was non-stop, you know. And with this project being in that vicinity of an area within wetlands and within our Aquifer, I mean, Aquifer could grow. You never know, with all the rain we've been having. So is this something that you guys be willing to look into?
We would, we'd take a look at it and see, you know, we'd love to see the plans that your representatives are on file with the town. We could reach out to Bill and take a look at what they're doing.
Mr. Chairman, my client is more than willing as a modification to the site plan or a condition of the special permit to explore that. And if there's any type of technology we can add that's reasonable to provide the level of comfort you want. Mr. Frisby just indicated to me that he's willing to explore that.
Thank you. I mean, I think it would make a lot of people, including myself, a little safer about that aspect if this happened to go through.
Terry, did you see the, this fuel dispensing system general information? Because on page two, it speaks to all piping and tanks are double-walled and continuously electronically monitored. Electronic monitoring constitutes a continuous precision test.
That's correct.
So, you know, they picked Kleenex and they picked Band-Aid, like it...
I think we're talking about the same thing, but we're happy to check on that issue.
I think they're meeting very similar standards. It just might be a different vendor.
Understood. Point taken. Ms. Hardy?
The state is pretty strict on underground tanks.
Extremely.
Okay. Ms. Hardy?
The state requirements are pretty strict for underground tanks.
Yeah.
What would be the capacity of the number of trucks that would be allowed to park there in a given time?
We have a capacity of two at this point. I mean, as far, we have a area, I can see on the screen, we'll be here, two vehicles that are not getting gasoline or diesel. So we're parking two. We have two positions for the high-speed diesel with a bypass lane to prevent any type of congestion around the back. And then there is some stacking queues of three or four more tractor-trailer trucks if, obviously, someone's already using the diesel dispensers.
Okay, so what happens, because this is a very populated area. Even people who aren't driving tractor-trailer trucks frequently get confused in that whole roundabout area. And with the meeting of ninety-five and three ninety-five, I mean, the traffic there is horrible on any weekend. It's terrible. So what happens if a truck pulls in there and is already at capacity? That truck would then just have to exit without getting the gas?
No, we have a bypass lane. So if there's vehicles stacked and these two doesn't want to get gas, they just want to get through and to the surface area, there is a bypass lane. So there's to help alleviate the congestion concern that you just raised.
Ms. Hardy, I would also just point out that those two parking spaces are signed for fifteen-minute parking only. We do not want long-term parking of any tractor-trailer parks, tractor-trailer vehicles on the property. And that is strictly enforced by Mr. Frisby's employees. That's not the type of operation he runs. The only reason we actually added those spaces was at the suggestion of Mr. Mahalan, because there may be a driver who wants to use the bathroom facilities or, you know, pick up a sandwich and continue to move along. But, you know, there is no long-term parking whatsoever for that, for tractor-trailers on the property.
Okay, so while the trucks are parked there, I notice when I'm traveling that oftentimes the truck drivers leave, the trucks idling. And my concern is that this is very close to the historic cemetery, as you're aware, and the stones there are very fragile. And I'm concerned about if some fuel is coming from, if they're leaving idling on tracks.
Well, again, the only, if you could see on the plan, the only places there's parking is as far away from the cemetery as possible on the site. But, you know, I'm sure we can, we can put up a sign as well as there's no idling as well. I think a lot of gas stations that do truck fueling have those signs put up.
There's a new state regulation, trucks are not allowed to idle for fifteen minutes.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, and certainly, that's not something that we would encourage by any means.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Mr. Peck?
A couple. It looks like there's no traffic light you're installing, correct?
No, no traffic light.
Have you looked at that hairpin turn headed south on I-95, getting off Exit 75 and coming back to the site? That hairpin turn, is that...
The traffic coming from them or just the condition of the hairpin turn?
Could you do me a favor and just stand behind the podium and speak into the microphone now, please? Thank you.
Yeah, maybe just to clarify and maybe I'll get Mr. Hesketh up to answer the question. But obviously, you're talking about the hairpin turn, studying that area. Are you referring to the geometry?
Negotiating eighteen-wheeler, taking a hairpin turn.
And then going on to three ninety-five.
Yeah, that's, that's off-site DOT roadway, I believe you're referring to, correct?
Yeah.
I know Mr. Hesketh is taking a look closer at the locus map, but I know part of the DOT review, they're gonna be looking at trip generations, what added trips will be pulled off from the highway that will be using that off-ramp as well. So if DOT has a concern with that, I would hope that they would bring that to our attention.
For the record, Scott Hesketh, traffic engineer, license in the state of Connecticut, firm of F.A. Hesketh and Associates, and our office is in East...
What'd you name it, please? A little bit slower?
Scott Hesketh, H-E-S-K-E-T-H.
Thank you.
Our office is in East Granby, Connecticut. We did not specifically review turning movements off of the highway ramps as, as they are highway ramps designed by the state of Connecticut and I would expect are capable of accommodating tractor-trailer truck traffic in all types of movements now. I'm not specifically aware of the exact location you're talking about in my head at the moment, and we didn't seem to have it on our mapping here. But since they are designed by the Department of Transportation, I would expect that those movements can be made. be made.
But next time you're going through town, headed south on I-95, get off of exit 75 and come back to the site. There's a hairpin turn that I'm just concerned about, you know, 18-wheel is driving on the grass in the mud and just making the place look not so good. Um, that's all.
Understood, thank you.
Uh, the, one other thing, uh, if you have a, a bus, the entrance to the site with a bus, any, I mean, we have one site in town where buses bottom out going up a hill. Um, any thoughts on that? I don't know how steep this entry is.
That's, that's a, that's a very good concern and a good question. Um, obviously, we, we signed the property for, um, tractor-trailer trucks use this entrance. Obviously, larger vehicles such as a 30, 40-foot bus, we would, you know, we don't like to see those coming into our pedestrian area. We can modify our, you know, our signage so we could better direct those buses, which are diesel ran, um, to tractor-trailer diesel entrance this way and buses. So we can make that modification, just to be a little clearer, to make sure that there is no inter, you know, intermingling of passenger and, you know, buses and other vehicles.
You took into consideration the turning radius pulling out of the establishment?
Yes.
The tractor-trailers and so-called buses and everything?
Correct, so.
He also asked the question of the aprons leading in, is there at the proper grade to allow a bus to pull in?
Yes.
Explain that to him.
Yes, yeah, for the record, um, obviously, as far as the grade goes, um, as we mentioned, um, we would re-sign to make sure the buses and the like would use the easternmost entrance drive. Uh, the drive, uh, the grades there are relatively minor coming in, so we do have a smooth transition before we start to climb up. So yes, we do have a smooth, um, radius and transition down at that entrance. We don't get no bottoming out or things of that nature.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Ken? You good? Mr. Dwyer? Okay, Mr. Earl?
I just have a concern about going onto the northbound entrance ramp. I don't know if this is in your purview or if it's been thought about at all, but that's pretty dangerous, getting onto the highway there is pretty dangerous, and trucks want to scoot off onto 395. I wondered if any thought had been given to that traffic that's going to be going off of your establishment back onto the highway.
Back onto, to the ramp to I-95 North?
Yes.
Obviously, um, as Mr. Hesketh, I was just going to reiterate, all those state highways, the on-ramps, the off-ramps, that they, they're all designed for those larger vehicles. So it is designed and implemented by the DOT. So obviously, if there's anything substandard there, I don't want to say it would be their fault, but if it's substandard, they would probably definitely bring it to our attention during their review.
This is true, I mean, it is out of our purview, but it is an issue as it is.
It is an issue.
And I do know, like, being in the trades myself, I do know that, like, once you start a project and you try to bring it up to code, do your best to, um, improve that. So if there's a way for you guys to do that, please do. I know it's out of our purview, but.
We typically are required to do, but do so by the state when you go for the encroachment permit. So if there are deficiencies, it's typically on the developer to correct them. I'm not aware of any deficiencies at that intersection, just so make clear of that on the record.
Come on down, I'll show you sometime.
Sounds good.
Mr. Mahalan?
Could you touch more on the CAM application of, are you going to do that and expand on that a little bit, or is that, does anyone remember you?
No, I, I think.
Can you touch some resources?
Sure, sure.
If you can provide us some information.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll reiterate some of the comments I made before and maybe expand on them slightly. As I said before, this property does not have any waterfront, it's not on the water, it's not, doesn't have any coastal resources whatsoever. Uh, under the Coastal Area Management Act, um, we're required to define and to share with you the coastal resources that are on a property that's subject to site plan review. We're a thousand feet from tidally influenced waters associated with the Niantic River. Um, the land type that we are considered on the Coastal Management Act is called developed shorelands. We have a prior commercially developed property with, as you heard before, an aging, sort of deteriorating, impervious surface. Right now, when a drop of water lands on that property, it runs. There is no catch basins, there's no capture, there's no stormwater renovation, there's no even attenuation of peak flow. It literally runs off the land like off of a table into Boston Post Road and runs down the gutter line, um, ultimately reaching the Niantic River. So our perspective in this, and in perspective, quite frankly, whether you're in East Lyme or Norwich or Stonington or New London, when you have developed shorelands that you're redeveloping and you have a CAM application, application that's subject to the CAM Act, your primary focus is making sure that your stormwater is properly, properly treated and, and handled. So what we did is, we decided, because we're redeveloping the site, to completely revamp that system. So instead of a drop of water hitting that broken surface and just running out into the road, we capture that, we capture that in a catch basin system with sumps, we put it into underground infiltration, we have, um, underground stormwater, uh, uh, swirl technology units to actually clean that water, and we also have a surface detention basin as well to take that water and allow it to infiltrate back in and not just simply run off into the road and down to the river. So compared to our plan, and I think we've implemented it here, is to leave the site better than it is today. And, you know, we have modern, basically, three-phase stormwater renovation on this property where there is nothing today. And so from my perspective, um, there's certainly, um, no threat, there's no coastal resources being impacted whatsoever, and we've minimized the, the indirect impacts that may be happening to distant coastal resources as well. So I think we're certainly compliant with the Coastal Management Act, uh, and this is a vast improvement over existing and previous conditions.
So, so if you're endeavoring on coastal resources on our basis to the site?
Correct.
Do you feel you comply with all the policies of the CAM?
Correct, yeah, absolutely.
And there are no adverse impacts proposed for, uh, on the proposed activity on coastal resources?
None at all. And in fact, if anything, we've made the situation significantly better than the existing condition.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Earl?
I just had a couple quick questions.
Sure.
Is this, maybe I missed it, it could have been in here, is it open 24/7 and how, well, what's the lighting on the outside?
Um, I'm going to let Jim talk about, I'll let Mike talk about our hours of operation and Jim can talk about the lighting, because he worked really closely with Bill on the lighting. Mike?
We don't like bright lights. For Bernie.
Well, thank you for that question. No, so, uh, our operations are dependent on the nature of the business and the quality of the traffic and what the customer needs are. And we take into consideration each location separately. So we have some stations that are open 24 hours, we have some stations that are not. We haven't decided yet what this one will be. Um, it, it may be 24 hours, it may not be, depends on the, the situation and what we think we can best serve the, the needs of the, the market, so.
Mike, do all elements of the project be open? Or do you have some things closed down at certain hours?
Generally, if we're open, we're open. If we're not, then we're not. So, uh, in, in our business, um, a lot of times what happens is, um, the, the peak hours are the busiest, you build for the peak, and then the slower hours, you have your attendance, uh, you know, stocking shelves, cleaning, doing the things that we try to take care of our, our properties and make sure that they're first-class, clean, safe, well-lit, all that stuff. So generally, do those in the evenings at our other locations if they were work 24 hours.
Thank you.
And as, as a response to lighting, um, we've contracted and coordinated with a lighting vendor, um, Red Leonard, uh, and what we've done is we coordinated with, um, various staff members to find out what your standards are and what you like to see, because we mentioned you don't like to see bright lights. And when you see the bright lights, they burn hot and things of that nature. Um, we, we were given the directive of, uh, meeting some certain, um, temperature levels, the Kelvin, 40 Kelvin, 400, depending on how you do it, it's actually 4,000. But, um, we've implemented those types of characteristics and standards and specifications into the light fixtures that are proposed. We're going to have a combination of freestanding light poles around, around the site to illuminate drive aisles and, um, you know, vehicle moving areas. We have recessed lighting up under the canopy to illuminate the dispensing areas for, you know, oil changes and the like, so you need to be a nice light level there. So we made sure that the operational aspect of it matches and meets what we're giving for lighting. Uh, we've also done some, you know, lighting around the, uh, building itself to illuminate the, the walkways where the pedestrians will be. Um, and we took in all of that and we compiled it into a plan and made sure that we, um, didn't have any adverse impact to the surrounding properties, you know, minimizing or actually not having any light trespass over the property lines.
Okay, Mr. Bernadino, I have a question for you myself.
Sure.
So you're redeveloping or proposing to redevelop this whole property there. Why ask for a sidewalk waiver? You're the first property basically that's coming into town here, okay? Granted, you know, you have 95 there and there's no other businesses around you, but this town has got to start somewhere with sidewalks, so.
You don't want a sidewalk there, sir. And, and our, our, our position is that it's directly adjacent to the, the I-95 North ramp. It would be a sidewalk literally not just to nowhere, because there's no sidewalks on either side of the street, but that's not a place to be encouraging any pedestrian traffic. Our feeling is, is that there are many sites in town that sidewalks are necessary, and there's neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks that should have sidewalks. But this is, this is a vehicular-driven site. It's driven by passenger vehicles and trucks, and I just, from our standpoint, from a safety standpoint, we don't think we should be encouraging pedestrian traffic that close to the interstate. And I think if you look, if you look at a lot of other communities with similar type of scenarios, you won't see sidewalks in these types of environments. When you have sort of downtown centers where the highway comes through, you might see that. We just don't feel that it's appropriate on this site. In fact, we should be discouraging pedestrian traffic along the roadway.
One other question?
Mr. Peck?
Is there a landscape plan or?
Yep, absolutely. I'll let Mr. Bernardino talk about that.
Yes, uh, we developed a comprehensive landscape plan as part of the, um, overall package, um, we. Oh, sorry, thank you. I'm going to get mic'd up. Um, so we, we've incorporated a, a number of trees, street trees around the perimeter of the property. Um, we've enhanced, we do have a large sign up front, I think everybody's aware of that, so we're going to have some plantings around that, uh, perennials as well as annuals, no, more annuals, I'm sorry. Um, we do have a comprehensive landscape screening buffer to the detention basin up front. We worked with staff and we received some, you know, informal comments that we need to make sure that we provide that basin to be landscaped in somewhat a stead to a best that a whole underground can be. So we've incorporated a, a fair amount of plantings along the front there to visually buffer that. Uh, we do have, um, a seed mix for the detention basin, so it will be, you know, if, when and it is inundated with water, which we expect it to be, it won't kill the vegetation that's in there. So we do have moisture, you know, tolerant, uh, plantings around that. Um, and with that, you know, obviously, uh, there's a, a fair amount of different species throughout the site, around the perimeter. Uh, inside the site, we do, um, provide landscaping in certain islands, uh, throughout the site with some shrubs, perennial bushes and the like.
I mean, um, I will note that the state Connecticut does require them, where they have, uh, their property to put up a fence. We went round and round at staff level, where none of us are fond of chain link, um, but that's the state mandate. We're trying to, we want black, because we're hoping it kind of disappears when you look at it, as opposed to aluminum. I think that's where we did end up, but it's mandatory by the state and, and we kind of wanted to put some vegetation behind it to kind of make it disappear. Um, it's a tough site because essentially it's a retro site and we're going back in. Um, but certainly if any commission members have any, uh, questions or input, I think everybody's all ears.
Ms. Hardy, you had a question?
Yes, uh, so the previous occupants of that site, compared to what's being prepared, proposed here, were really pretty light usage. There was a restaurant, but didn't have many more than 20 parking spaces itself. So now this site does not have water and sewer.
Correct. It has onsite well water.
Yeah, so they're not connected to the town water and sewer. Waterford would be a distance away, but this seems to me to be a pretty intense, intensive use of the property with, um, multiple, shall we say, multiple flushes a day and, um, also will be, um, you know, so I'm just, I'm.
To, to address that, as, as myself being a plumber, there are many, many, um, different scenarios that you can come up with for a situation like this. I mean, you had a restaurant before which had multiple flushes per day, which had dishwashing, which had, you know, all sorts of stuff. So there are solutions to these issues that, that could be addressed.
So my question is, this has gone by water and sewer and they're comfortable with this?
See, if I may, no.
It's, no, correct.
This is, um, a, a private wastewater disposal system as well as a private well, even though it's called a public well. I'll explain. Uh, for the septic system, obviously, yes, we do have a lot of flushes. We're coordinating with the Ledley Health District. We've done our site testing, we've done our design calculations, we're in agreement on how much water is going to go down the toilets and down the drains. So we, engineering-wise and regulation-wise, there are standards as to what we need to design to. We meet those designs and those designs are being reviewed and ultimately, hopefully, we'll be successful with an approval with Ledley Health District. I don't foresee any issues coming from that. We worked with them very closely during the development of this process. Um, so that is obviously under the Ledley Health District's review. Secondly, with the, with the water supply, once you supply water to, I believe it's 20 people for more than three days' consistency, you know, you're considered a public transient water supply, meaning you got a well, but you're calling it public because you're feeding and you're supplying people from the public coming to your facility. There's a whole line of regulations and guidelines and permits that need to happen. That's all through the, uh, State Health Department?
EPA.
Department of Public Health.
Which you can't do until you get your zoning permit.
Exactly, which they don't want to talk to you until you get your zoning permits and the like. I can say that we have done preliminary tests on the well. We do, we feel comfortable with the capacity that's there. Um, obviously, there's some formalities that have to happen with the Department of Public Health, but, uh, we're confident that the water supply, um, will be there for the development and obviously, the septic system will be there to accept the water that we pull out of the well.
One sec. Any other questions?
One quickly?
Mr. Earl?
Sorry, I'm not an engineer, so excuse me for.
That's okay.
But I know you designed your fuel containment system, so there's minimal risk. If there ever was a leak though, do you feel confident it could not get 300 feet over to Banning Cove?
Yes, I, I, I'm confident on that. Um, the detection systems that we have will detect that even before it gets into the soils. We have multi, multiple layover compartments where we're continuous monitoring, um, inside the tank, between the tank walls and outside the tank walls, so there's multiple levels there. So we're, we're confident that we will detect any leaks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Nope. At this time, I'd like to move on to? Yes, Mr. Mahalan?
One more thing. Should there be a leak? How do you address it?
Well, obviously, the, the leak there will be, we could put a, a protocol together. Obviously, uh, we are engineers, environmental specialists as well, um, in my group. We can go out there, we're able to troubleshoot the problem, find out where that leak is. The monitoring systems are sophisticated that, you know, we could find that leak quickly, narrow it down to a certain area of which tanks leaking, things of that nature. Um, and then with that, it would be a matter of troubleshooting, finding, well, where is that leak? You would probably most likely need to draw the tank down to make sure that you stop the leak, first of all, that's the biggest thing. And then troubleshoot, excavate if necessary, hopefully that won't be the case.
So when you draw down the tank, you bring in a tractor trailer and pump it into the, into the tank and then draw it down so therefore then you can access it if you have to dig to look at the problem?
Yes, exactly.
And you replace the tank or pack, it takes five or six probably to patch it.
Exactly.
I would just add as well, this is Bill Swinney for the record, uh, Mike Frisby just, you know, whispered to me that each of his operators has to go through a training and, uh, certification process, um, to, for a hazardous materials and spill response plan. And part of that is if, if your electronic sensors detect it, what do you do? So there is a written book. So, there is a written book that's required as per your code for an operation of a filming station that has all those things, who you call, what do you do, how do you shut off the pumps? And so, that's all part of that comprehensive spill response plan that is part of every station that Noble and every other gas station, quite frankly, in the state of Connecticut has.
And that's the plan you did provide to our staff?
Yeah, we absolutely can provide a copy of that at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Now, as I was saying, at this time, I'd like to open up the public comment, please. If you have a public comment, I will recognize you. Step up to the podium, state your name. Hold on, please. And please remember that you are talking to the commission, not the applicant, and then the applicant will have a choice to rebuttal. Who is first? Young lady in the aqua hat. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Deb Mosher Dunn from Save the River, Save the Hills. I, I have a letter that we wrote, so I want to read it quick. We're writing regarding the proposal at the development of 51 Boston Post Road. Save the River, Save the Hills has concern with any new developments so close to the Niannic River. We're glad to see that some good use can be made of this property because it's been an eyesore for years and we're glad that the broken-down building and whatever else is deteriorating on that property will be cleaned up and not be allowed to further affect the water surrounding it. Having said that, we are hoping to hear, and we did hear some of this, that the developer and the town are working together to make sure that the new septic and stormwater mitigation will keep all future pollution from this site out of Golden Spur and the headwaters of the Niannic River. As you know, the Niannic River estuary remains on the EPA's list of impaired water bodies. Save the River, Save the Hills has been testing the water and the water quality of the river in conjunction with Save the Sound in a program called the Unified Water Study, which collects water data, water quality data on abeyments throughout Long Island Sound. We are finding very high bacterial counts in the Niannic River after heavy rainstorms, levels much higher than, that would close a beach if it was measured by the state. The river is dealing with what could be called a death by a thousand cuts as development continues to take down forests and other natural water cleansing areas from the watershed. As climate change increases the amount of waterfall in each rain vent, more and more pollution is hitting the streams and river downstream as it gets carried along with the torrents after Hurricane Ida, the Niannic River, was browned for over a week. There are things that we can do to decrease the pollution of the river. Save the River has been very happy that the town of East Line, East Line has focused on stormwater mitigation as they have showcased in their Hole-in-the-Wall parking lot over the years. We are looking forward to hearing how the site can be a showcase in keeping the following from the polluting, from polluting groundwater or the headwaters of the Niannic River at Golden Spur. Number one, any leakage from the underground tanks, which you guys were talking about. Any oil, gas, antifreeze, or ammonia that's coming from windshield wiper fluids and things like that as the cars go through there, from the hundreds of thousands of cars that could potentially use the gas station and create polluted runoff in a rainstorm. Any leakage from the proposed septic and any plastic or other trash from the site. We also expect that no additional nitrogen will be allowed to be added to the river from this site. We expect that the town has looked at the potential number of people who will be using restrooms on the federal highway between New York City and Rhode Island, especially in the summer, and have calculated that potentially huge number of people that would be using the septic and it will not be overrun by their use, especially in the summer, like I said. In summary, Save the River has high expectations for this development to be something that the town can be proud of for environmental reasons, not just for tax revenue. We are asking that the applicant in the town to put on exceptional environmental protections into this development because of its proximity to the headwaters of the Niannic River estuary. We're asking to make this a showcase, like the Hole-in-the-Wall Beach parking lot, of coastal environmental stewardship and low-impact development within the development. The life of the Niannic River lies in the balance of the towns in its watershed, making stormwater and nitrogen mitigation a priority as it approves development along its shores. Please make protecting the Niannic River a priority as you evaluate this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I can give you a copy of this for the record if you want it.
Sure. Oh, my God, Exhibit B. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Did you name an address for the record, please?
Ron Lewich, 13 Indian Lane, East Line. This is a great idea for a facility five years ago, but I have not heard of any plans for a future when we expect that 40% in five years, 40% of the cars will be electric. I see no stations here for charging, so we're going to have a lot of cars, reduction and get people who need gasoline but need power, and we're not going to be providing it for that.
They did have a couple outlets for charging. Three, thank you, three. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Donald Donella, 24 Patagansett Drive, East Line. I'd like to start off by noting that I'm a Board of Selectmen-appointed member of the Niannic River Watershed Committee and the East Line Commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources. However, I note that this particular development has not been discussed or reviewed by either of these bodies and I'm, any comments are mine alone. I also would like to note that we certainly would welcome the cleanup and development of this property, which has been long abandoned and certainly is an eyesore. I was happy to hear a number of positive points made by the applicants with regard to their fuel handling and storage, but I do beg to disagree with the statement that they do not feel that they will have any impact to waterways because I believe they will, two ways. One is through the stormwater handling system and one is through their septic. It is good that they will reduce the amount of water that is presently being discharged from the site. However, I note that the site presently has no, as Ms. Mosher Dunn pointed out, there's no vehicles in the site now. There's no heavy metals, fluids, gasoline, oil drips going off the site now. So, even if they capture 70% of it, there's still going to be 30% of that, of new materials going down towards the Latimer Brook and the upper reaches of the Niannic River. Another point I would like to make is regarding the septic. I don't know if this is under your purview. I may have missed my chance in making comments to other agencies, but I would hope that the applicants hear me talking to you about this. Septic tends to be looked at by many of the public health agencies as a problem of reducing bacteria and other such organisms that may cause problems with human health. But there's another component of wastewater that's incredibly important to the environment and that is the nitrogen compounds that are excreted by humans and people, as well as things that might be coming from organic kitchen waste at a, at a restaurant, as such as being proposed here. These will go into a septic system. They will not be reduced. They will go out into groundwater and that groundwater will eventually go into the receiving area of streams such as the Niannic River. And we had a study in town here done when a pine grove was sewed, done by the United States Geological Service, that showed once the area was sewed, there was a large reduction in the amount of nitrogen that was going into the Niannic River. This has many positive benefits. The river is close to being a tipping point. We're close to losing eelgrass, which is a key habitat in the river. I would urge your body or any other body that has the ability to regulate this, that the applicant put in a state-of-the-art wastewater treatment system or septic that would reduce the amount of nitrogen that is going out. I know these things exist and they can be done, and I think that would help greatly. Secondly, was also brought up about debris and plastics. I would hope that the stormwater handling system for the site will be, remove plastics. I know from personal experience doing work on the Latimer Brook behind the Flanders Shopping Center, which is near two fast food establishments, that you get tons of trash back there. I'm not blaming the establishments, but that's what happens. People buy these things, they get, they're careless, they throw it out, it gets blown around. So, particularly plastics is a huge issue these days and I hope they're, will have a good program in cleaning their stormwater basins. And I think one other final thing, which hasn't been mentioned, and I hadn't, didn't hear the applicant point this out, and it's another source of bacteria to the river, and that's pet waste. Now, you travel this country, you go to a lot of highway rest areas, many states have pet areas for pet, and I think this would be a good addition here because you know that people are going to, if they're traveling with a pet, particularly dogs, they're going to get out and they're going to, they're going to have their dogs do their business. I think this would be a good addition to the site. I think they should provide waste bags and litter boxes for those, and I think that would be another thing that would be a good addition to the site. And I guess that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Front row here. Did you name an address for the record, please?
Paul Maston, 23 Holmes Road. I do have a question for the gentleman as they were going through with the trucks going in and the cars going in. As you know, with COVID, a lot of people bought a lot of RVs and a lot of people pulling tractor, I mean, their, their homes behind them now. And some RVs are all gas and they didn't talk about RVs going into the car to fill up with gas and/or somebody pulling a trailer home behind them. So, I was just curious about how that's going to work on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Mark Sperry, Save the River, Save the Hills. I just was wondering if you've heard about the Dark Skies Initiative where cities are turning their lights off for migrating birds. The Ouzagachi Hills are a dark area that attracts and allows migrating birds to travel through with the lighting that you guys might be proposing that could interfere with that. So, I suggest we look at that further in the study. Also, the traffic patterns might, they're already bad enough as is, as people can tell. I get on the highway there a lot and that's quite a dangerous area. It's had a lot of accidents, that tractor-trailer with the diesel, remember that blew up there, killed a woman or two? And we feel that we shouldn't be looking at the traffic patterns in conjunction with how many cars are going to be coming in and out of the gas station. Also, if anybody remembers a toll system, every time you pulled into a toll, there's a big grease spot in the tolls because every car that came in had dropped one drop of oil. That's the same thing that's going to happen here. It's going to happen in the roads, it's going to happen on the sidewalks, it's going to happen wherever you're driving. So, the more increasing vehicles, you're going to allow more pollution to be generated. And so, we should probably look into that system as to try to negate that. Just basically, we should be looking at the traffic patterns a lot because right now there's a lot of, a lot of problems with 95 South, not only on the weekends...
Just weird, we can't control 95.
I know, but that, that will feed into this project because people will be getting off to utilize that and blocking more and more traffic. So, there's going to be a lot, it might be a need for traffic lights or expansion of the lanes or something to, you know, mitigate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any, yes, ma'am.
Elizabeth Cottrell, 154 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niannic. I'm a member of the Historic East Line Cemetery Association, which has the care of the Riverhead Cemetery. It was mentioned, but it didn't go into detail...
Please address the commission.
Yeah, it was mentioned by them, but they didn't go into detail about the access to the Riverhead Cemetery because the map was turned around, we could not see. The problem is, if you look at the entrance to the cemetery, people going in there, if they come out, there should be signage at the, at that Y. If not, everybody coming out of that cemetery is going to drive headlong right into the semis coming onto the access there. And so, there needs to be some signage, large signage there to direct people. And that means that those people are then going to be driving around, they're going to have to follow the tractor-trailer route to go around the building, which I'm not complaining about or anything like that. I just want to make sure that Mike and his crew and you folks know that there are people who go in and out of this cemetery quite often and we just want to make a point to have that taken care of, seeing that has been our driveway for many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Questions from the public? Please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just going to quickly rebuttal and then just some final comments, if that's acceptable to the commission. I wanted to appreciate, I just want to say thank you for Deb Mosher Dunn, I don't know if she left or not, but I thought her comments were, everything that we agree with. We've taken an attempt in this project to do an environmentally sensitive and sensible project. Certainly, we appreciate the fact that the Niannic River is an important area in town and we truly believe that the design that we've put together is a drastic improvement over the stormwater situation that's currently on the site. And, and I think this is going to be a showcase of how to do good development in the East Line. We have high expectations for this project as well and we're looking forward to showing and I know Mike is looking forward to showing the community what he's capable of doing. I think it was pointed out that we do have electric charger stations as part of our plan. I expect that there probably will be growing demand for it. The one thing I know about Mike, having worked with him for some time now, is he meets his customers' demands. And so, if there's a need for more charger stations, we'll put more charger stations in at the appropriate time. You know, I think Mr. Donald spoke about impacts to, in stormwater and septic. I just want to remind the commission that a separate state-chartered agency, the Ledgely Health District, is in charge of the septic design for this project. We are going to be working with them. We can't build our project without their approval because we don't have access to public sewer here. We don't have access to public water. But we need to get their approval to do that and they've done projects that are this caliber and much larger projects with septic systems throughout their region and throughout where they have jurisdiction. There was a statement that was made and I want to correct it because it may have been an issue of communication. We have a 70% reduction in runoff coming off of our site, but that doesn't mean 30% of our runoff goes off into the road. And I think Mr. Donald may have misunderstood what we were saying, is the amount of runoff that comes off because of the way we've designed it with the infiltration systems is there's 70% less water generated from the site. In the 25-year storm, we detain it all. Nothing comes off the site anymore. It's not that drop of water that runs right down to the river, it stays on-site. It's only in the high peak events, you know, when you get up toward a 100-year storm, that you'll get some spillover in the road, but that water will be treated as opposed to water now that has no treatment whatsoever. I also want to point out the stormwater system has hoods, deep sumps, it has isolator rows in the underground infiltration system, and it has subsurface treatment facilities, swirl generators, that will actually capture things like plastics, cups, straws, you know, some of that garbage if it gets in there. You know, Mr. Frisbee runs really tight ship on all of his facilities. He has staff that cleans them up all the time, but if anything gets past that, we have so many levels of extra protection that I don't think that that's a concern. In terms of RVs, we design our passenger vehicle fueling station, there are RVs that are gas-powered. Our pumps are farther apart than pumps on other stations. We have additional turning room and radius and greater aisle widths than your typical national gas stations, just for that reason, to be, to accommodate those larger sort of box truck or RV-sized vehicles that are gas-powered, that would need to use the gas pumps in the center of the site. So, we've already planned for that, we've accommodated that in the plan. All of our lighting is dark sky compliant, it's full cutoff, there's no light going up. So, and quite frankly, you know, the dark skies thing is really important and I appreciate the comments of the gentleman who brought them up, but in almost any modern project now, almost all fixtures are dark sky compliant. That is a throwback to 20 years ago when I started planning, when you still had lights that shined light up in the air. So, all of our, our lights are cut off, are full cutoff. The traffic patterns, as we said before, this is really governed by the state DOT, but I would point out that we have expert testimony entered into the record by Scott Hetz, who looked at that whole network and found that there is no adverse impact or safety impact to the surrounding road network as a result of this plan. Ms. Kootu, I think, I apologize if I pronounce your name wrong, from the Cemetery Association, she makes a really good point and that, and I'm going to take responsibility. I missed something when I was explaining the Cemetery Association. One of the tenants of our agreement with Ed O'Connell is signage... One of the tenants of our agreement with Ed O'Connell is signage at the Y, and that signage is two ways. It is, one, so people coming out of the cemetery know that they can't go straight and go down the intake for trucks. But it's also when you're coming up that you know you can't go right into the cemetery. And so we need to work together, and so that area is going to be, also, there's no parking or stopping in that area as well, because the cemetery has to use it. So at the Y, we're going to have appropriate signage, and there is a note on the plans talking about signage, we can expand that note if necessary, but that's part of the agreement that I've brokered with Ed O'Connell, signage at the Y intersection. That concludes my rebuttal. Just a couple just closing remarks, Mr. Chairman, I'll be very brief. As I said before, the application before you, the gas station and the convenience stories, those are permitted as of right in the CA district. We meet all the minimum requirements of your regulations, and it's been reviewed by your entire city staff and agencies. The fast food and the drive-through do require special permit, but we think at this location, those uses are totally harmonious and orderly with the surrounding area and the community. In terms of the CAM review, this is developed shorelands, we're drastically improving the stormwater treatment on the site, which is really what you need to review on a developed shorelands CAM application. But maybe most importantly, this plan is consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development. The CA district in the Plan of Conservation and Development is specifically called out to encourage convenient commercial opportunities for visitors and residents, and that's what this is, that's what this travel center does. And I don't think it can be located in a more appropriate and convenient place at the outskirts of town as you're leaving town toward Waterford along the highway. Most importantly, though, the POCD stresses the fact that this town needs to direct new commercial development into existing areas that are zoned for commercial use. This is a CA zone, we're not taking residential land and rezoning it. And we should also focus redevelopment efforts and infill development efforts on existing sites to bring them back into productive reuse. Rather than taking a green field or a forest and cutting it down, go into the places that were already developed that are fallow, that are unproductive, that haven't been used in a long time. This site has sat vacant for decades. I remember coming back to Connecticut in the late 90s and driving by this site and saying, geez, this is going to be a great site, and 20-something years later, it's still undeveloped. It sat unproductive far too long. And Mr. Frisbee tonight is, he's planning on investing literally millions of dollars into this community to redevelop this site with a high-quality commercial product that we think is appropriately located and is compatible with what you're trying to do. And I think the message I want to leave you with tonight is, Mr. Frisbee is here for the long haul. He's not, he just doesn't want to build a project here in East Line. He also wants to be part of this community as a business person and a business owner. And we hope that you welcome him in tonight. We'd ask for action on our application tonight and approval of the applications before you with any reasonable conditions you feel appropriate. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask for a motion to continue or close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second, thank you, Kim. Seconded by Mr. Dwyer. All those in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 600. I was just going to suggest that. We will take a short break, please. It is 9:34, calling the meeting back to order. Moving on to number three on our agenda, application of Paul Garrity Esquire for Duval Partners LLC owner for a zone change from SUE to RU80 for property located at Holmes Road and Grassy Hill Road, identified in the application as East Line Assessors Map 57.0, Lot 30, Map 55.0, Lot 3-1, and Map 52.0, Lot 3. Note that the legals have been run. Mr. Mulholland?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, it is.
Read the official memo.
This application, subject to this application, all this peak area up in the upper right-hand corner of the zoning map, takes until all the yards away. The reason is that the dogs on the ground will point out, and the applicant will also point out.
I'm looking for your memo now.
I'm there. I just have to check the memo.
Kim, could you read that for me, please?
The memo?
Please.
Sure. This is from William Mulholland to the East Line Zoning Commission, September 16th of 2021, regarding the application of Paul Garrity Esquire for Duval Partners LLC owner for a zone change from SUE to RU80 for property located in Holmes Road and Grassy Hill Road, identified in the application as East Line Assessors Map 57.0, Lot 30, Map 55.0, Lot 3-1, and Map 52.0, Lot 3. In this proposal, the applicant is proposing to rezone the previously approved SUE-ZE zone to the prior zoning designation of RU80. The RU80 is essentially the underlying zoning district. From a planning and zoning perspective, this proposal is in the town's best interest. The current designations, SUE-ZE, allow a number of uses that may not be in the long-term interest of the community. The subject properties were originally rezoned for the purpose of building a golf course and senior housing. The project for a, I think it's supposed to be a variety of reasons, was never executed. It is my view that this proposal is a housekeeping item.
Thank you, Mrs. Kim. I'll ask Ms. Thurlow, could you read the letter from the Department of Planning and Inland Weapons?
Yes, it's addressed to Matt Walker, Chairman, East Line Zoning Commission. Reapplication of Paul Garrity Esquire for Duval Partners LLC owner for a zone change from SUE to RU80 for property located at Holmes Road and Grassy Hill Road, identified in the application as East Line Assessors Map 57.0, Lot 30, Map 55, Lot 3-1, and Map 52, Lot 3. Chairman Walker, the East Line Planning Commission at its meeting of August 10th, 2021, found the above- referenced text amendment consistent with the 2020 East Line Plan of Conservation and Development as amended. If you have any further questions regarding this letter or the POCD, please do not hesitate to contact the Director of Planning, Gary A. Gossett II, at 860-691-4105. Sincerely, Monsieur Royce Williams, Secretary, East Line Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Thurlow. I will read a correspondence from Marcy Blint from Connecticut, DEEP. Excuse me. This is dated August 25th, 2021. Dear Bill and Jen, thank you for referring the above-noted zone change referral to our office. As proposed, is a site-specific zone change, not a regulation change, and located outside the coastal boundary, excuse me, boundary. It is not subject to Section 22A-104, Section P of the CCMA, with mandatory referral zone change provisions. Therefore, we will not be commenting at this time. I also have a correspondence from the Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments, dated September 8th, 2021, to Mr. Matthew Walker, Chairman, Town of East Line Zoning Commission. Dear Mr. Walker, I am writing in response to an application for amendments to the zoning map of the Town of East Line. The applicant was referred to this agency pursuant to Section 8-3B of the Connecticut General Statutes. The proposed zoning map amendments seek to change the zoning of a number of parcels off Grassy Hill Road and Holmes Road from SUE to RU80. Based on a review of the material submitted, I do not believe the proposed map amendments will have a negative intermunicipal impact. In fact, the proposed change will bring the zoning classification of these properties into greater harmony with the zoning of nearby properties in Montville and Salem. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Samuel Alexander, clear. Move on to the presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Garrett?
Just a housekeeping matter. We submitted the notice to the abutters to Mr. Mulholland approximately a week and a half ago, so less, not less than 10 days, but not more than 30 days as required by the regulations, and those notices were all certified mail, included the notice of this hearing tonight. So I want to make one thing clear on the applicant, it says, I am here on behalf of Duval Partners, which is technically correct, they have authorized me to proceed with the zone change application, but my client here tonight is the East Line Land Trust, and Mr. Lewich is in the rear of the room at this point. Ladies and gentlemen, what we are proposing, as Mr. Mulholland pointed out, the area up here is the, approximately 329 acres. These three parcels right here were zoned of the SUE and SUE, a number of years ago, which permitted multifamily housing and a golf course, and they were done so under the floating zone, granting a special permit. On behalf of Duval and the land trust here, I'm asking you to change the zone back to RU80, and the reasons for that are as follows. The land trust has an agreement with Duval to acquire 301 acres at a minimum of this property to retain as open space. We are in the process, and we have an approved grant from the Department of Environmental Protection, Energy Environmental Protection, for funds to purchase the property. However, as I have done a number of these grants with this land trust and other land trusts and the DEEP, and one of the issues that we have to address with DEEP is that this project originally was proposed under a special permit, so there is a record in the land records of the Town of East Line that says this property is subject to a special permit. DEEP will not close on the transaction with us, because I cannot delete that special exception, or that, excuse me, that special permit from a title insurance policy that I have to issue to DEEP saying that they will be in first position, not subject to any conditions that might cause them to lose the property or impact the conservation easement on it. And then the way this would work is the special permit, I don't recall the date that it was granted and approved, but it gets recorded in the land records, so it is prior and right to the conservation easement that the land trust is going to place on this property. And if there was ever a dispute down the road with somebody who came in and said, I've now acquired the property, or I have the interest in that special permit, we would get into a battle with whether or not the conservation easement is prior and right and controls the property or whether the special permit. So the title insurance company takes an exception for that, saying, we don't insure for any potential claims that might arise for that. I recently had another one in East Line with DEEP, we got the special permit terminated on the property, and then we're able to move forward, because I was able to delete that from the title insurance exception on the policy. That's why I'm asking the commission to change the property zone here, the RU80, so that we can move forward with the grant with DEEP. Right now, where the process, the grant is, it's been approved, but obviously there are conditions that we have to meet towards the closing. And we'll also point out, too, I think one of the earlier letters, I forget who it was from, indicated that it's consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development, and actually, in the Plan of Conservation and Development, on page 16, this particular property is referenced. The grant that we're talking about was originally obtained by the Woodsman's Land Trust, and it's mentioned in that section of that, where Woodsman had collaborated with DEEP to acquire that. The issue that arose is that Woodsman has now assigned the grant to the East Line Land Trust, and we're proceeding to close on that transaction in here. But I think this is moving, one of the, and having been on a Planning and Zoning Commission myself and chairman for a number of years, we often look at the Plan of Conservation and Development sort of as the ideal thing or where we'd like to be, but oftentimes, we never achieve what's on there, and we are hopefully going to be able to achieve setting aside some 300 acres of this property in perpetuity, governed by a conservation easement in favor of the state of Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection. The other thing I would point out, there is a map of the area, it's a little bit more detailed in there, it's outlined in pink for you in the handout that I gave you, it's actually, I'm sorry, it's all right in front of you on the counter there. And then there is, there are two maps from the Plan of Conservation and Development, and one of them is the map that points out the perceived open space in town. This is perceived open space right now. The land trust is hoping to make it actual open space on there. It's also in an important watershed that the town has recognized in terms of that between the tributaries and the underground aquifer, and so it's a point of important interest for the town. And we believe that this, moving forward, is a good way to get us to the next step to close, to closing the transaction with the DEEP and establishing this property in perpetuity as open space. So I'd ask the commission, based on that and the fact that the developer, the Duval Partners was a private lender, took this back after the developer failed and has been sitting on the property for a number of years, the Woodsman's Land Trust approached them, just for your historical background, and started talking to them about doing this transaction. Because the grant wasn't as much as Woodsman needed to close the loan, they transferred it to the East Line Land Trust, but Duval had said, we'll continue to go forward with that transaction with you, and we're in the process of, in fact, I have a call with the partners in Duval tomorrow morning about some of this, but we're hoping that the commission will approve the zone change and allow us to take the next step to putting this property in perpetual easement in favor of the state of Connecticut, the people of Connecticut as soon as possible. Are there any questions at this point from the chairman or the commission?
Do you have any questions? I'm all set. All right. Moving on, do we have any comments from the public? Yes, sir. State your name and address again for me, please.
Paul Maston on Holmes Road. The property he was just speaking about is also on Upper Walnut, it's a budding that, so I don't know if people were sent the letter or not on Upper Walnut to attend the meeting. It's not just Grassy Hill and Holmes Road. The other thing is, is I'm new at this, I get a little nervous. I heard what he said, and from what I got out of it, if the zone change gets changed, the state of Connecticut is going to own that piece of property? It's not going to be able to be turned into housing? That's my question.
So, Mr. Garrett? Sure. Go ahead. No reason to be nervous, we all. The, in regard to the Upper Walnut, the people on Upper Walnut were given notice, it's in the record, and we get that, we actually get that from towns generated by the town clerk, I believe, for us through the assessors' records. Duval Partners is retaining approximately 24 acres of land on Holmes Road and a small piece on Grassy Hill. Combined, I think it's about 25, it's about five acres on Grassy Hill. At this point in time, they don't have any development plans that I'm aware of, and again, I don't represent them, but I can represent to the commission that they have done some testing out there to see if it's feasible, but they're going to retain about 25 acres total out of the 325, 329, plus or minus acres.
Said for open space, is that what you're?
Not what they're retaining. So what they're retaining, again, that is an open question at this point in time, there have been discussions that I'm aware of, that some of that would also be contributed to open space, depending upon whether or not they go down that road, and, you know, being candid, obviously, if they donate it as open space, they're looking to see what the maximum value of that is. That's why there's test holes out there, to see if it's developed.
It's a maybe.
That's a maybe.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mulholland?
Should there be a change of heart on the 25 acres, they would need permits either from subdivision, which would be a planning commission, if they were to get out on that path, which is competing with what the neighborhood is, or if there were some zoning activity that would still need permitting out of my office or from this commission? So there'd be another step or two? Thank you.
Right. I mean, it's not, at this point, there's no plans that have been prepared or anything, saying there's 10 houses, whatever. They have, I'm just being honest, they've explored that to see what it's worth.
Understood. Do we have any other public comment? Yes, sir.
I'm ready to speak, as being courteous. So I live on, across the street from this gentleman he's talking about, and 25 acres. There is about 17 houses between Upper Walnut and my house, which is about the third house in an East Line town. The road, if you do build, just in case I'm bringing it up, is about, I don't know if you've ever been up there, you could just about get two cars through. If the bus comes down the street, you got to make sure you pull over, or else you're going to hit the bus. That road is not wide enough, I don't think, unless you do a traffic study, because even if you get 20 more houses up there, you're figuring another 40. if you get 20 more houses up there, you're figuring another 40 to 50 cars of traffic plus buses and whatever might be there. So what he was saying about the 25 acres, I think if I heard it right, there'll be more to come if they want to build houses on that street from Upper Walnut down to the town line? Is that what I heard?
So there could be?
Time out. Are you all set?
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. There's, I mean, there are no plans right now. The area is up off of Holmes Road that they are reserving. I can't tell you what they're?
Yeah, just for the record, this is for a text amendment.
Zone change.
Zone change. Yeah.
Zone change. Change starting maybe to the houses. There's a permit outstanding in, I do believe, my question is, I thought it was for 80 or 90 senior housing. That permit is still valid.
Right.
So they could go and build that tomorrow, they might need a site plan extension, then they would have to research that. They could come in with affordable housing, and most people may know, and this commission certainly knows, those applications throw out all those zoning rules, and we're told to get out of the way regardless of what we think locally because of the state legislation that governs affordable housing, which is 830G, and much more should be, we're kind of kicked to the curb, and they could put in a couple hundred thousand.
Yep. The other thing too is it was approved for a golf course, so from the land trust perspective, and I get the gentleman's concern, there might be down the road, I can't represent one way or the other whether that's going to happen because obviously they're reserving some land. But from the land trust perspective, we're taking roughly 95% of this property and putting it in open space, and that's huge. It's absolutely huge. And while there might be some development, that may be frankly, say the cost down the road, that might be the cost that has to be accepted for doing something this big with this piece of land.
Should there be some, there would typically be single family homes.
It'd have to be single family now that we're with the zone change.
Essentially two acre lots.
Right.
Eighty is one acre, right?
Two acres. It's a two acre, right.
So they'd be two acre lots with, I think it's 150 feet of furniture minimum.
Right.
And they could be bigger. And they could be four acre lots if they're posting that, so probably depends on the market. But this is what if, because right now we're looking at a zone change, going back to the old underlying zone, which I think from a staff perspective, and I'm only, don't take a position, but it's comparable to the old underlying zone than it is for the SUE and SUE. Those zones, they could come into this commission and ask for business land, and it's permitted in the zone. You know, obviously subject to a lot of controls and a lot of improvements in road and traffic and all those things. So from plan and zoning perspective, from the staff perspective, we think it's in the best interest of the community, but certainly up to this board to make that determination.
Ma'am, did you have a question? State your name and address for the record, please.
Lindsey, Lindsey Rush, 15 Grassy Hill Road. I was just going to add on to that comment. My understanding with the SU, SUE zoning is that the previous application didn't go through because of a sewer issue, the large numbers of, the cost of the sewer to get into an 80 person complex up in the senior living. So I do like the RU-80.
Please address us.
So I do like the RU-80, and I was encouraged by the mention of caring about the tributaries and the aquifers in the region, and I just wanted to point out that some of the land that they're hoping to reserve along the southern portion on Grassy Hill Road is the confluence of several tributaries, and I would hope that that would continue to be appreciated, like was mentioned.
Thank you. Any other public comments, questions? Moving on, at this time I'd ask for a motion to continue or close a public hearing. Paul Garrity.
I'm moved.
Ms. Thurlow, seconded by Ms. Kim Kay.
What are we doing?
Oh. I'm sorry, are you closing or continuing?
Closing.
Closing the public hearing. I apologize. Seconded by Kim Kay to close the application of Mr. Garrity. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against. Abstain. Motion carries six, zero, zero. Moving on to the regular meeting. Mr. Lisca, would you like to join us?
Okay.
Would you please excuse us a minute? Application of Harvest Christian Fellowship of Niantic Incorporated for a special permit for a church-religious institution on the subject property. Said parcel is located at North Bribrook Road, Eastline Assessors Map, 24.0 Lot 76. Welcome back, Ms. Lisca. Moving on. Open up for discussion. Is this something that we want to address now, or do we want to get a good night's rest saying it is 10 o'clock now?
I'm fine with the.
Up to you guys.
We can talk about it.
Okay.
I'm going to move on.
Okay, let me find, I have paperwork here. I'm moving on, I mean, all points were taken, to be fair and all that stuff. It is a special use that is allowed in said area. I had some concerns in the beginning in terms of, you know, like, there was inquiries about developments going in there in the future, stuff like that. I don't think the area itself would support another development, like affordable housing or a residential neighborhood. Maybe one or two houses at the most, that's about it. I do have concerns about, you know, this is a church-religious group that has grown over many years, so my only fear is if it does grow and just happen to move on, what would happen with this property? I think it is something that could probably be converted, I guess, to a residential somehow? I don't know how, but.
It could also be affordable housing.
Yeah. I don't think there's enough property to support a septic system for said parcel of a project like that. They meet all the land requirements, I guess you may say, as to the town staff. You can't basically tell somebody they can't do something because you don't think it doesn't fit there on your personal opinion, in my opinion. Any other comments?
Yeah. I feel that we were satisfied, unsatisfied, with the comments of the, and the adjustments in the site plan in regards to the fire protection, fire truck maneuvering around the parking lot that's been improved. I feel this complies with all our regulations, and I think there's one item in our regulations that we must address, and that is, does this project hurt property values? We are charged with protection of property values. Does it harm the quality of life with anyone in the immediate vicinity? I think that's the only question we have to deal with.
So we have zoning regulations, and there's 34 sections, and they break down into countless regulations. And we've heard the applicant say how it meets all sections. It meets the setbacks, it had wetland approval, and it met those letters of the law. When you're a member of a zoning commission in a town this size, you're going to hear the applicant, and you're going to know good people that are for the applicant. You're going to know them, and you're going to, you know, know that this is well backed, it's well presented, and it's something that the town needs. But you can't vote on that. You're up here to make the best decision for the town. You got to look at the regulations and see what they're telling you. And one of the 10 guidelines, and if you look at our zoning regulations, there are 10 guidelines, and one of them is that it encourages the most appropriate use of land throughout the town. What does that mean? It's vague. But another one is, it stabilizes and conserves the value of land, homes, and other buildings. Does this stabilize the value of those homes in that neighborhood? Now, the applicant, in one of their presentations, said that this is a small rural neighborhood of six homes. Maybe 12 houses, maybe, I don't know, 2,000 square feet a house, and now there's an 8,000 foot building right in that neighborhood. And if you look at the map, it's drastically bigger than anything else there, so I don't think it stabilizes the value of the land and homes in that neighborhood, and that's one of our guidelines. Because of that, even though I really think this is something the town needs, it's something that I can't support. Next one. Thank you, Ms. Lisca. Ms. Thurlow?
Well, I do have empathy for anyone in a neighborhood that doesn't like something that's happening, just from my own experience, but I, the church is set back, I mean, there's a lot of open space, it's not like it's, the building is right next to the houses, there's a lot of trees. I think it, it could have been developed by affordable housing, it could have a 200-foot cell tower on, I mean, there's so many other things that could be developed, and I've never thought of a church as detracting from a neighborhood myself, but, I mean, I could, I know Mr. Peck brought up putting trees between their driveway and the neighbor's driveway, which I thought was a good idea. I'd encourage the design team to work with the architect to do whatever they could to add charm to the building. I think it's still a little bit like a warehouse with the steeple on top. I think you could add charm to that, but I don't see a good enough reason to vote against it.
Thank you. Kim Kay?
Just for the purpose of the record, I did not attend the meeting where this was discussed, but I have read through all of the meetings and feel confident that I can appropriately. So my comment to Mr. Lisca is that I appreciate his comments, but as we look at our town, particularly here in Niantic, we have multiple churches in town that are very large in comparison to the residential neighborhoods that they're carved out within, and I do not believe that they in any way have destabilized or devalued the community or the properties around them. So I will not be voting with Mr. Lisca.
You will not vote?
I will not be voting with Mr. Lisca.
Oh, well.
I'll definitely vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim Kay. Mr. Dwyer?
For this particular piece of property, I'm in favor of building that church there. To me, it's all wetlands all around it. It's either the church or a private home, and I would prefer the church.
Okay, thank you. And just to add, I mean, I agree with, you know, all of you basically, I mean, I don't think it's going to be a high-volume church, per se. If it does grow to where, it comes to the point to where they're going to relocate, I believe Mr. Mulholland, like a new applicant, would have to come in front of us, correct? For a usage?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, if there's a change, unless it was converted to a single family house.
Unless it was converted to a residence.
If this happened, I can't obviously project the future.
And then, so, and then, you know, like, they did meet all of our inquiries, the town and the membership, so at this time I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application of Harvest Christian Fellowship of Niantic Inc. for a special permit for a church-religious institution on the subject property. Said parcel is located at North Bribrook Road, Eastline Assessors Map, 24.0 Lot 76.
Do I have a second? Mr. Dwyer, thank you. All those in favor, motion to approve the application of Harvest Christian Fellowship of Niantic Incorporated. You say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Against.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries four, one, one.
Mr. Chairman, a motion effective on Friday.
Thank you, Mr. Mulholland. Okay, moving on. The application of Noble Energy. Oh, thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mr. Lisca. Ms. Denise? Oh, I need to change the camera too, sorry. There we go. I apologize for the camera.
You have a lot of responsibility.
I know, I'm trying, I'm sorry, you know, and with all this paper here, I can't find what I'm looking for.
It's a tie.
So I am looking for, all right. Application of Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings LLC applicant for a special permit to construct a fast food restaurant with drive-through, a coastal area management site plan, and a gasoline service station at 51 Boston Post Road, Eastline Assessors Map, 36, Lot 61. I would like to make a motion to continue this, so that I could actually, with me running this meeting, I did not get a chance to read through a lot of this, and I really actually would love to. So I myself would like to make a motion to continue this hearing.
I'll second it.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Markovitz. All those in favor of continuing, Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye. Against?
Aye.
Aye. Three, three.
No vote.
No vote.
No vote.
So we keep going.
I vote it's no vote. Doesn't carry.
Does not carry, so we talk about it.
Let me take this.
Okay.
It's a complicated piece of project, and we, basically, I think it's good for the area, but I do think we just need a little more detail.
Like what?
Well, myself speaking, I mean, I could not read everything here, as you can see, I'm trying to go through all this, I mean, the concept is great. My biggest concern is the tanks, I, you know, and all that, the surrounding neighborhoods and all that stuff, the traffic patterns and all that stuff, which I know we don't have jurisdiction over.
Yeah, we're, we're not the critical path on this, you know?
Yeah.
This is DOT, and this is.
No, I know. Yeah.
So why, why would we hold them up, right? Eastline is focused on being business friendly and focused on continuing to improve our town, and I don't see how us delaying this accomplishes that.
Agreed. Agreed. Point taken.
They have multiple hurdles that they're going to have to go through.
And it seems like it's very well thought out. They're wanting to do the highest quality in every area. I don't see why we told it that.
Again, just to reiterate, just so I could read it in all honesty, this is the first time I saw it tonight, and I haven't been able to read it, nothing, but I will let the commission do what the commission does. Mr. Peck?
I have a couple items, not, not big ones, that I'd like to address, bring out. A dead manger from the Friends of Asagachi Hills mentioned, you know, concern about the river and so forth. I want to throw out a thought. She mentioned a hole-in-the-wall parking, parking lot, where there's sections of various types of pervious, not pavement, but.
Like parking blocks.
Parking area.
Yes.
And I'm not saying do the whole thing, but I think in certain areas, if that were, you know, it's been proven they can plow the snow there without digging these things up. I wouldn't mind seeing something like that in a, in a section that would maybe catch... what she's talking about, keep it from running down the road.
But I think we've heard testimony, Norm, that there isn't going to be very much running down the road unless it's a 100-year storm, right?
I'm talking about.
So what, what are we catching from running down the road? Like, this site is horrific. It's an eyesore in our town. We have a businessman who is willing to invest and take an eyesore and turn it into a public asset, right? That travelers can use, that people in our town can use. And the runoff isn't going to be any worse than it is today. What, what more are we doing?
I don't think you necessarily mean runoff, right?
I mean runoff.
Like, to their catch basin that they have?
I mean, going down the driveway into the post road, okay? Wouldn't, just thought I'd throw it out. The other item is the Cemetery Association, the concern Liz had with not being able to go in and out as they have for a couple hundred years. Wondering if Bill might work with them to assure that they don't have to go all the way around the building and come out.
If, if I may, Cemetery actually did not have a right to pass a refast access to Cemetery. This gentleman is providing that. They wanted updating and negotiation with Evan Kamal and Mr. Schweene. One of the things I had asked for is that they address that. And they give them some kind of written document that gives them that guarantee, which they have done. And we have talked about signing it and enhancing the signage to ensure that it's safe. And obviously, no one wants anyone to get hurt. So we can go back and look at that at staff level. And just have one more cut at it, because I would just share, I've got to meet with them anyway, because the camities, I had asked for, and I had said they would be made available, and that's very similar to the cam at the gas station on 156, which is a few years ago, where it's open-ended, has a beam exposure. They agreed to do that, but I'm gonna need the drawings. I think it'd be a better look for, for the station. So there's gonna be some cleanup. There always is after these hearings and meetings where there's some miscellaneous that we could probably enhance and make better. And we do go back and look at those, and then it's not something that is substantial, but something we can do. If the answer is yes, I can do that.
Let's go.
I just wanted to add, I think it's great we have an owner that wants to be part of, involved in our community. And I thought the idea for a pet station was good, and I wish I would have thought of that.
I, I do want to piggyback on Norm's comment about the cemetery. I think it's great that we're providing egress to the cemetery. But I, I do worry about tractor-trailers and people going in and out of that cemetery. It, and, and I have even, and these are all things that zoning can't fix or regulate, but maybe suggest. So I have great concern about the tractor-trailers exiting and making that turn. And I know that, because they're gonna want to get on to 95 North. And I know DOT is gonna do this, but, and look at that and take care of it. But I'm almost wondering, and this would just be a suggestion for the engineer to study, is if we, if you considered reversing where the tractor-trailers come in and out? Because if you have the tractor-trailers coming in higher up, or, sorry, closer to 95, and having them exit lower, they're gonna be able to make that turn, they're gonna be able to get straight, they're gonna be able to get on 95 easier. And I think if you're someone going to visit the cemetery, I know when I go visit, I'm usually put together pretty well going in, and I'm a hot mess coming out. And I think if you come out of the cemetery and you're just able to go straight, you pay attention to the other tractor-trailers going straight. I just feel like there's an engineering element there that needs to be reworked. But I know it's outside of our purview, so.
If I may.
Mr. Mahalan?
We went round and round at the staff level with the same concerns. That's why you see the tractor-trailer traffic essentially separated. They did not have that initially, and so I kind of insisted, because I share very similar concerns. It's a very difficult site with all that's going on. And we all felt initially that was a little ambitious for the site to have all those different activities. Our engineering department, and we have, you know, our engineering department has several engineers, and we had three or four of them working at this with air engineer. We threw out two or three renditions of the plan, so we got to this one, which seems to be the best one we can get for the activities proposed. We have same concerns about traffic in DOT, driven in that area. It can be night here, we all know that. But outside our purview, that's why I asked the question during the hearing about interaction with DOT.
Yeah.
So it's sort of on the record, and we know that they're making that effort just to ensure, and we know that they're gonna have to get a permit, and that DOT can be very difficult. So we shared the same things. We're happy to get back together again with them and kind of see if we can polish it a little more, massage it a little more. And who knows what DOT may say to them eventually.
It'd be nice if DOT got them out of their own ramp.
Say, we're redoing the whole intersection.
Yeah.
And if they don't, if DOT had a drastic change to the entrance purpose, they have to come back and redo up the site plan. So we're happy as staff, if that's what you want, and we want to do it anyway, go back and massage that, because a couple of points came up tonight that I think we all share, including myself. I've done a lot of these site plans, but we want to make sure it's safe. First thing, it's gotta be safe for everybody. That's why we separated, tried to separate the traffic as much as possible. When Grandma or Grandpa shows up with the grandkids, and they go up for ice skating, and they're coming in a little car, and everybody's singing and happy, and no one's paying attention where they're going.
Okay.
I think it is good.
Yeah, we don't want all that murkiness. So we tried really hard to look at that. And they, we've done it a million times, and we're happy to kind of try to massage that process a little more. If there's something else we think we can do.
I agree with that, actually. Because that radius also is my concern as well. Have we got anybody else? Have, Mr. Dwyer?
I have nothing to say.
They got a generator. He's good.
He's got a generator, yeah. Then can I get a motion? A couple of motions, actually.
I'll make a motion to approve the application of Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings LLC for a special permit to construct a fast-food restaurant with drive-through facilities, site plan approval, and waivers, other requirements for sidewalks, and side yard landscape buffers pursuant to Section 24.6 of the East Line Zoning Regulation, Section C, Sub, sorry, subsection C and E, for a gasoline service station at 51 Boston Post Road, East Line Assessor's Map, 36.0, Lot 61.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dwyer? All those in favor of the approval of Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings for a special permit to construct a fast-food restaurant, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstain? Aye. Motion carries. 5, 0, 1. Do I have a motion for the CAM?
I move to approve the application of Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings LLC for a coastal area management site plan review for a gasoline service station with fast-food restaurant and drive-through facilities at 51 Boston Post Road, East Line Assessor's Map, 36, Lot 61. Because the application is consistent with all applicable goals and conditions of the CAM Act, and the applicant has taken all reasonable measures to mitigate any adverse impact of the proposed activity on both coastal resources and future water-dependent uses.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Kim Kay? All those in favor to move, approve the CAM for Noble Energy, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstain? Aye. Motion carries. 5, 0, 1. Thank you.
Mr. Mahalan, Mr. Chairman, Public Act Thursday effective on Friday, the SP.
Thank you, Mr. Mahalan. Moving on to the application of Paul Garrity Esquire for Duval Partners LLC, owner for a zone change from SU, SUE, to RU-80 for property located at Holmes Road and Grassy Hill Road, identified in the application as East Line Assessor's Map, 57.0, Lot 30, Map 55.0, Lot 3-1, and Map 52.0, Lot 3. Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the application of Paul Garrity Esquire for Duval Partners LLC, owner for a zone change from SU, SUE, to RU-80 for property located at Holmes Road and Grassy Hill Road, identified in the application as East Line Assessor's Map, 57.0, Lot 30, Map 55.0, Lot 3-1, and Map 52.0, Lot 3.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Take your pick. All those in favor for motion to approve the application of Paul Garrity for Duval Partners, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Abstain.
Motion carries. 5, 0, 1. Thank you. Moving on. Approval of minutes of September 2nd, 2021. Anybody?
I just had a question. Somewhere on page five, we brought up signage, and I didn't know if we wanted that documented in the minutes. The church said they weren't planning on putting any signage on Bridebrook Road. I just didn't know. We should put that in there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Notice any errors or omissions?
Why would we want to eliminate that? I don't understand.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dwyer, please, hold on. Mr. Peck has a question?
Over.
Go ahead.
Why would we want to eliminate discussion about a sign? I, I don't understand.
No.
Well, I said it wasn't in there, and we had discussed it. I thought maybe we should document it.
Oh, okay, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Dwyer?
When are we going to vote on this Public Act 12-29?
Where are you? Are we talking about the minutes right now?
No.
Okay, we're still on the minutes, Mr. Dwyer.
Hurry it up, I want to talk quick.
Do I have a motion? I will make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor approving the minutes of September 2nd, 2021 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Abstain?
Aye.
Motion carries. 4, 0, 2. Thank you. Moving on. Old business, we have none. Is that correct? That is correct. New business? Any business on the floor, if anybody, a majority of the vote of the commission?
That's you, Mr. Dwyer.
That's you.
When, when, when are we going to vote on this Public Act 21-29, which is mandatory?
That is, that is on Mr. Mahalan's agenda. It is something that is going to be handled fairly shortly next month. So it is something that is going to be addressed.
Because it's mandatory that we do it. I don't want you to forget it.
You can explain that, yes.
So we're going very busy next month. We need to meet three times. We have that kind of work.
One of which would be?
That section that Bill's talking about, the outline section on the statue, will be on the 14th of next month. What has occurred because of the pandemic and the rising cost of doing business, we were not busy this spring, as you all know. We even canceled a lot of meetings, and typically, we're very busy. All of our work has suddenly appeared for this fall. And so we have a very busy schedule, as you saw this evening. I've got two coming up at the next meeting. And then on the 14th, we're gonna do this out there. I expect a crowd. I hope the room will have a crowd.
You will have a crowd.
That's gonna be followed by our normal second meeting of the month, which I have, well, we're gonna have some housekeeping. I think we're doing a FEMA update that's mandated by the state, updating our regulations. It's housekeeping, but nonetheless, we have to do it. It's also a backup date in case we continue anything. And I have a couple of other items that are in the wings. At the next meeting, I think we have a text amendment on marijuana. And then we have, there was another text amendment for uses in CA zones. So I'll let that hang until we get to that meeting.
Was that the brewery stuff?
No, this is, this is a text amendment on landscape usage, which is sort of an interim demo, but obviously, to the applicant, it's important.
So why don't you, Mr. Dwyer and I, bring our boxing gloves since we're on the 14th? On the 14th, very well.
We tried for the 20th first. I needed the town to turn me at that.
Nice.
I needed the town to turn me at that. Here, he's only unavailable on the 14th, so I had no choice.
Bill, when is the public hearing on the text amendment on the FEMA substantial improvement?
That is, that, the substantial improvement, we've already done. This is how.
You know what I'm talking about.
This is housekeeping as instructed by DEP. We're cleaning up our rigs, and we're making some adjustments within them. In addition, the town board of selectmen has an ordinance on FEMA with favor, and they have to amend. I've already thought the first step on doing that. DEP wants it to either be deleted or reflect exactly what I was wanting to say. And that was put in place to govern Crescent Beach Park Point and our adjacent association, where our regulations have no legal jurisdiction. However, I put the question out to town to turn me, that since we do CAM in those areas, what's the difference between the same thing? Please mull in our work, and we shall see what I get back.
On FEMA?
On FEMA. So a lot of things are going on at, at staff level. We're juggling a lot of walls and trying to get slots for applicants who are planning to be here by the same token. We're trying to make sure that we have hearings in timeframes where you're comfortable reviewing, and I can get backup dates if we have to. It's not always easy, because really, there's a lot of guesswork, trying to anticipate how big, how long, but it means around, I kind of kid somebody, and yet, give you ample time to do what you do. And I don't know if you're going to continue things, because you don't know that until you have a hearing. So we have to look at those things. So we're juggling, where I think we're in good shape.
When is the hearing to eliminate the building inspector, to make it consistent?
That is on the 21st of next month.
Okay.
It's all scheduled legalized, we set the run referrals are going up. What we're doing is, I sent our eggs up to DEP and asked her to look through them for any updates. She sent back, and you'll see it when you get it, the document has it all out of it printed, and those are the things she wants to change. I changed some things and eliminated them, because when she sent this out, it was even easier to delete what we had. Now, right, we just slide in what she's doing. They're mandating we do this, and as part of that, that's also.
We're still talking the FEMA thing?
Well, FEMA. So that's our housekeeping issue. I see it as routine, essentially commissioned generated, but mandated by DEP on the FEMA stuff, which we need to do. So that's all. We're juggling everything as best we can. I think we're in pretty good shape.
So, Bill, you're saying we're meeting on the 7th, the 14th, and the 21st?
I'm saying that that's correct, due to the volume of work. We have no choice in the applications that have come in.
Not the 28th, though?
No.
We can all take a break?
Yeah.
Maybe I'll even wear a tie, Kim.
But the 14th, I'm putting in my calendar to bring my boxing gloves.
You sure you want to sit next to me, Mr. Dwyer?
We might need to, maybe Norm would switch with me, that, so I don't get in trouble.
Bill, will you wear a tie right now?
All right. Karen, Mr. Mahalan, you all set?
Yeah, I'm all set. We're busy, I've got some other things in the works. You'll see them soon enough.
I ran into George McPherson. He wanted me to convey how well he thought the Boats Incorporated building turned out, which I have to agree also, it came out great.
Yeah. They worked very closely with, you know, very closely with their board extension.
All right. Comments from ex officio, Ms. Hardy had to leave. I'm sorry, sir, you cannot. She said that they did cancel the board of selectmen meeting, and she really did not have a report. So that went quick and easy. Comments from the zoning board liaison to the planning commission?
I actually went.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
I did. It was, I think, my first time ever in my four years.
Speaking of which, we have Brian back there, but yeah. Speaking of which, we have Brian back there, but yes.
So they did have one public delegation presentation that was on, I think it's called the Hawthorne Property. They wanted East Lime to purchase it and put it in Land Trust, so that's kind of a big thing. And then they had a couple of subdivision presentations. And that's all I'm prepared to talk about. But I did go, and I'm glad that I'm on zoning and not.
Thank you, Kim Kay. Next up is Mr. Peck. Comments from the chairman? I would like to say that Matt is doing good. He's feeling good. He's getting better. I'd like to ask everybody's opinion. What is your opinion on the paper copies that we get?
I think it's very helpful.
Do you? I like them both. But tonight, I was going nuts trying to find everything, because I normally read it online.
You're a chairperson.
I know, but.
And do.
Run the camera.
I would have loved to pre-read a lot of this stuff, which I normally do, and I was unable to, unfortunately, due to miscommunication.
You can still go to the link and print it out.
It's not on our website.
It wasn't on all of this?
It wasn't?
No.
Not the big, huge.
None of, only our minutes and our agenda was on there.
Well, I had them printed out from last time, because I had them all on for the gas station in Holmes Road. So I read them.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, anybody?
Everybody.
I like it here.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Carry on.